We're ready in the chambers.
The Fairbanks North Borough Assembly Joint Work Session is called to order with the Animal Control Commission. Madam Clerk, will you please call the Animal Control Commission role?
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Swan? Mr. Swan?
I'm present.
Thank you. Ms. Sherman?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Olness?
Here.
Ms. Rudy?
Here.
Ms. Gardner?
Here.
Here's a quorum of the Animal Control Commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please call the role for the Assembly?
Mr. Guttenberg?
Here.
Mr. Rutterman?
Here.
Ms. Reeves-Ramos?
Here.
Mr. Leginas?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Haney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Crass?
Here.
Ms. O'Neil?
Here.
This is Quorum of the Assembly.
Thank you. Tonight, we are gathered today to hear from the Animal Shelter Replacement Project, an update from the Administration and consultant. At this point, we'll request an update from Mayor Hopkins and the consultant on the Animal Shelter Replacement Project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was fast turnaround. All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming today to this joint hearing regarding the 65% design status for the animal shelter replacement. This, we're here really because the Assembly last summer requested an update from the consultants and the design team and the administration when we get to the 65% design status. I am no engineer nor an architect, and so if you have a question about what 65% means versus 35%, please ask the design team here in the staff box what that means, because it's not just 65% complete, and we've got 2/3 of the building designed. It is more than that. The animal shelter, as we all know, was initially built in 1974 following the '67 flood when our animal, when our population voted for animal control powers. Since then, our population has doubled, and our building is now 50 years old. Happy birthday. The KIP back in 2017, and as the KIP process has moved forward, the Capital Improvement Plan, the scoring process has rated this several years ago as the number-one needed and rated project of all of the upgrades, new facilities, and maintenance improvements that we need. And that's why this project has moved forward, leading to where we are today. Objectively speaking, I would say we need a new animal shelter. It is 50 years old, and I was fortunate enough to do a tour with the staff several weeks ago to see what it looks like inside to understand the need for it. Looking at where we sit today and the design that we have, you know, it's a, it's a... The consultants did a capacity study with our animal shelter staff, looking at the numbers for trying to understand how big of a shelter we need. And there are no other buildings in town that we have found that were adequate to just refurbish. We looked at Joy Elementary as a possible remodel for office space and had a consultant here locally look at that, and it would have been $22 million just for offices. And this morning, the Public Works team and my office team met with Dr. Scott Learned of Design Learned Firm, DLI, Design Learned, Inc., to understand some of their comments and ways that they would look at designing a new shelter or addressing what they would look at if they were doing a review of other people's designs. And in that conversation we had with them this morning, we talked about what happens if you want to use a new building or use something that's already in place. And he clearly and unequivocally said, as they've done many, many, many of these, it rarely and almost never pencils out where there's a savings for using a new building. If we were able to repurpose any of the schools that have been closed in our community, they would need to tear down all of the interior of those buildings, pull up the slab, replace all the plumbing and all the HVAC system, and so you'd be left with a shell. And that work, rarely in his experience of a long time going, has ever penned out to be cheaper than new construction. Additionally, looking at the schools that the school board will be closing, that there are no more schools that we're getting right now. We're not, just last night, the school board voted to keep Two Rivers. They have not decided what they're doing with Pearl Creek, and Midnight Sun is staying in the district's usage. So we're not getting new facilities from the school district to be able to use for this. One of the, during that tour that I had, you could see the problems with the shelter and its 50-year-old lifespan. The cement door jams were crumbling. There are three different heating systems. The roof is currently a tarp that is held down to the roof. It's tied down. There's ice damming inside. There's exposed conduit and wire. The barn for the animals in the back is very small and surrounded by chain-link fence that's very dangerous for animals to be there. They keep turtles and rabbits in dog pens. The cats are housed in the same room where they do euthanasia on cats and other animals. They pull a screen to be able to provide some separation from the animals as other animals are euthanized for various reasons there. As we all know, the surgeries are held many times on the floors in the clinic room, and the surgery table is a medium-sized sink with a grate over it. They have a number of capacity problems, but not all the time, and often of different types of animals as well, from rabbits to puppies to cats. As I said, the Indigo experts and consultants that were brought on as the experts in this structure or in this field did a capacity study to get to where we are today with the number of cages and holdings for the different types of animals that we have. If you want to ask questions about that matrix or what they went through, please refer their questions to the experts as I am, not them. The need for a new animal shelter is real. The question is, why do we bring you guys here today? And that is to be able to ask the questions that to make you feel either comfortable or get to a point where you understand why we, this building is designed the way that it is. We wanted to make sure we brought the consultants up to provide transparency in this process, have this large joint hearing to be able to ask any questions you have. There is no time limit on this meeting today, so we are here until we drop the gavel at the end of the night. And I think it's important to be able to have these discussions and provide this transparency, because oftentimes transparency is the best, sunlight is the best disinfectant. And this is a big project, and a big project for our community that many people have always support and concerns and questions about. And we want to make sure those questions have an opportunity to be answered, and that's why we're here today. Indigo is here as the design expert. Beddoesworth North is the architect to make sure that this building is up to Interior Alaska standards. And we had our conversation with Dr. Scott Learned this morning to make sure we were able to field a number of the questions that, his name has come up regarding. And early on in the project and up through most of the 35% design phase, the design team and our Public Works Department and our shelter and animal control staff worked with a woman named Dr. Kate Hurley for most of that work, and she is the person that wrote the ASV, which is the American Shelter Veterinarian Standards, of which standards across the country, shelters across the country are built to. She is no longer part of this project, so you won't see her name on it. And that had to do with when we added drop-off, nighttime drop-off shelters. That is against that ASV code for other standard areas. But, so, much of the design and the floor plan was built with the expert on hand, but I do not want to break our promise to her to not give her, to keep her name off of this project in general. We currently, as discussed during the Capital Improvement Plan meetings that we had, there's no current plan when we will build this building. I'm not moving forward with appropriation, appropriating ordinance next week. We can work with the Assembly if that's the decision that the nine of you want to go with and what that timeframe looks like, if this is the right project for it. But I wanted to make sure we had the transparency for it as we move forward this conversation on a needed replacement of the shelter that we have. We've talked a lot about school funding and the needs for projects all across the borough, but the money for this facility is still there in the CIP MR fund, fortunately earning revenue to be able to put towards projects in the future, but also still there for an Assembly to make this decision as we all work together to move forward. That's all I've got for an opening here, but I want to make sure I also thank Design Indigo for coming up to be a part of this presentation tonight, to support our community in this decision as we move forward, as well as Beddoesworth North for all the work that you guys have done up to this point on this project, and as well as Dr. Cole for being here to talk about the impacts or opinion and viewpoint from the private sector and veterinarians here and across the borough. So, thank you for that and able to answer the few questions that I am able to answer before I pass it off to all of you and the experts themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hopkins. Assembly member Guttenberg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You've come late to this, and you've seen the broad, general picture. So maybe the first question to ask is, what is the perception as usable life left on the existing facility? Is it next year? Is it five years? What is your perception? And then you can pass it off.
I'm not, as, I am no engineer nor architect, like I said. Our Department of Public Works might have a better answer on that. There are, I do know that there are things that are not fixable. The roof is not something that we can continue to put more work and more energy and money into, and it is literally a green tarp tied down to the roof. It is a matter of time versus a set date on when it's needed. Plus, just the simple problems with the facilities, the exposed conduit, the flow, the safety of the animals in there, everything like that. The staff needs, the public needs are no longer up to code and placement. So I could not give you a hard deadline on when the building would be unusable. That might be a question for Public Works or for the experts here, but the scoring system in the KIP process rated it number one, and that was why it has moved forward to this point that, like you said, I came late to the game, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Animal Commission or from the Assembly? Okay, looks like we're ready for the presentation.
Great, thank you. First, I'll introduce myself. Tracy Van Ersdale. I'm the President of Beddoesworth North Architects, and I'll speak a little bit more about our credentials and our commitment to this project and to this, to our community here. The agenda that the mayor and our clients through the Public Works have asked us to cover and update is a bit about ourselves. So we'll do that, Bruce and I in particular, and then talk a bit about the purpose of this project. And Dr. Cole will be speaking on behalf of her assessment of the benefits of this new shelter. And then Kimberly Imbert will be speaking about the existing facility, maybe a bit more detail about the existing conditions that they're practicing in. We'll highlight on the process that we've been through since we were awarded this project and the amount of effort and meetings and progression. And I'll speak to that succession of how we work with the borough through a 35% design, 65%, 95%, and 100%. We're right now in the middle of the 95% development, so I'll speak to more about that. And we'll present the design to you with the site amenities and the medicine and care, specific design considerations that we put into this project. It will be covered by Bruce. And then we'll close, and like the mayor mentioned, we're then open for questions. Now, this is our first meeting in a series of tour we're on. Tomorrow night, we'll be presenting at the open house, so hopefully folks can join us there. So like I mentioned, I'm Tracy Van Ersdale. I'm born and raised here in Fairbanks, and I'm proud to be the President of a firm that has a legacy of over 50 years. We have offices in Fairbanks and Anchorage. I manage the Fairbanks office. We have landscape architects, architects, and interior designers. And with me here tonight, I have my business partner, Mark Kimmer, as well as our Director of Interior Design, Dana Nun. And Genevieve Bellone is also the project manager who has led this project through inception. And then also with me is Bruce, and you'll be hearing a bit more about him as we go through this. A little bit more about Beddoesworth North. We do work across the state. We only do work in Alaska. This is our home. We are going to be here when this project is constructed and operated, and that's a real commitment that we take strongly and pride in our project. So borough projects we've done across, since I started with the company in 1997, a myriad of schools, Randy Smith, Denali, Nor Dale, Ryan. We did the North Pole Library. We did several iterations of renovations at your Noel Wayne Library, including the most recent one. And it's really been a privilege working with your Public Works Department, because they're, they're not only creative and holistic in understanding what first costs are versus lifecycle costs. Like, what is it? Is it sustainable, maintainable, resilient, design decisions? Because they know from the operation side. But also, we've been involved in many of our public and civic projects in Fairbanks in particular, like the Fairbanks International Airport, where we had 17 specialty consultants helping that with the multi-phase. As many of you probably remember how many phases it had to go through to stay operational, very complicated, very technical. We rely on specialists to help us with that. Similarly, on the central kitchen image there on the slide for your school district, we had a kitchen consultant help us with that heavily complex with equipment needs, HVAC, ventilation, drains, freezers, that sort of thing. We rely on specialists. So again, another example there is the Fairbanks Memorial Hospital Surgery Edition that we completed a few years ago. Highly specialized, highly medical, and we rely on team members that are, share our same values and are collaborative and are the best in the best. So with that, we are, we were privileged to team with Bruce and his colleagues to ensure that this project not only served the community exact needs. That's very important to us, that this is appropriate for this place and this purpose. We know Fairbanks is unique. We are special. But we also want to recognize what are the highest standards and best in care in both the people and the animals that we serve here. So I'll turn it over to Bruce.
Thank you, Tracy. So we're pleased to bring our animal shelter design expertise to the project and to you here in Fairbanks. And I think one of our distinguishing marks is that we work closely with basically the world's leading shelter medicine expert. That is the UC Davis Shelter Medicine Program, the Corrett Program. And that's where Dr. Hurley and Dr. Wagner, as the mayor mentioned earlier, have been involved in the project. So our mantra is that we only work with the best practices that are attributed to animal shelters. And we operate from our office in Davis, California, and most of our work is in the Western United States and Australia. Next slide. So that's me, and it just gives a synopsis of work that I've done in the past and been part of over the years with experience. And we've been doing this for over 20 years. I'm licensed right now in California, Oregon, Washington, Alaska, and New South Wales, Australia. Next slide. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cole in just a minute, maybe just to point out a few of the projects that we've worked on that come to mind. We're currently assisting the UNO Animal Rescue Group, a little farther south state. And as you work down the coast a bit, we have projects in Washington State. Seattle Feline Rescue comes to mind. And a little farther south with Oregon, we also have consulted with Josephine County. That's the Medford area. And in California, we have any number of different shelter clients that we've worked with and for, designing and building shelters all the way from Dehama County, which is in the north part of the... in the north part of the Sacramento Valley, down through the Bay Area and Southern California. So that's, we figured, you know, that's a big terrain, plus Alaska and Australia, that's enough. We, we like to choose carefully the shelters that we work on where we feel we can have the big impact in bringing these practices, best practices to your project. So without further ado, that's a lot of ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cole.
So my name is Dr. Barb Cole. I am the owner of Aurora Animal Hospital. I've been a veterinarian in this community for 17 years now, and have been the owner of Aurora for 13 years, continuing a 50-year legacy of this practice. When I first moved to Fairbanks, one of the things that really struck me was I was really impressed by the services that the animal shelter provided for this community, especially compared to other communities that I've lived in, some with public animal shelters and some without. In addition, over my 25-year career, I've witnessed, witnessed a significant evolution in animal care within the veterinary profession, within our communities, within our households, and within shelter and rescue environments. I think we all know that the current FNSP animal shelter is antiquated and unable to meet the needs of our community. The conditions are unsafe, they're unsanitary, they're outdated, and they're very stressful for the animals and the humans. Aurora Animal Hospital just recently underwent a major facility upgrade. Our original building had served us well for over 45 years. I believe it was built in 1975 also, but we needed more space and more features, and so in 2023, we moved to our new location. It was a renovated building, but it was designed to be a modern veterinary hospital. And I think this experience gives me a unique perspective here on the importance of investing in modern facilities. I have had the opportunity to review the plans for the new shelter with the staff, and I do feel that this project needs to move forward. The new design addresses critical issues and brings our community shelter up to current standards of care. The design incorporates features that will significantly reduce animal stress, such as designated areas for the exotic animals, separation between the cat and dog housing, and kennel designs that provide more space for the individual animals. Decreased stress will also improve the quality of life for the animals, the staff, the volunteers, and for visitors. The proposed new facility is not designed to be a full-fledged veterinary hospital, but it is designed to provide basic veterinary care, including spays and neuters, in a modern and sanitary environment. We did do a little bit of a comparison, and the planned surgery suite in the new shelter is roughly half the size of mine in my new building, so I don't think it's extravagant. I do feel it's appropriately sized for the shelter's needs. It is important to realize that a modernized facility has the likelihood of reducing the time to adoption, so that will help increase the overall adoption rate and improve post-adoption success. I can attest also that by having a properly designed and constructed facility, it really, really improves the ability to retain and attract qualified staff, especially professional staff. The public will also have a greater interest in visiting the facility. I agree that this is a significant expense for our community, and I wish it wasn't necessary. However, I do feel that if we're going to invest in a new shelter, it needs to be done properly and with a vision for the future. This facility needs to serve our community for decades to come. I urge you to support the new animal shelter design. This is an investment in the well-being of our community's animals and a commitment to providing them with the care that they deserve.
Next, we were just going to highlight a few pictures, and Kimberly was going to walk us through some of the operations of the current clinic. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Imbert, the Shelter Operations Supervisor. I'm here tonight to quickly speak on the current state of our building, and many of you have heard me speak on this before, so it's just a quick recap. I've worked with animal, at Animal Control at this building since 2011, so I'm quite familiar with the challenges that we face every day. The original building was constructed with the purpose of rabies control, impoundment and euthanasia being the focus. Since then, at that time, shelter guidelines did not exist, and since then, our services have evolved to also prioritize quality care, community services, and live outcomes. Our existing facility has been added on and remodeled to multiple times since original construction. As you can see in these pictures, the roof is not in great condition, as the mayor mentioned, and it's been modified in attempts to keep it functional. The outdoor kennels that you see are for all dogs in our care to eliminate. This is problematic as they cannot be sanitized, and we do not have a way to truly isolate sick animals away from each other, and that is a problem in also the cat area and the exotics area. What you will also notice in many of these pictures is the pipes and various types of corridors on, or on the walls, inside and outside the building and along the ceilings. Finishes are failing, drains frequently back up, doorways and parts of the walls are crumbling, all making it very labor-intensive to achieve quality care and sanity, quality animal care and sanitation. At the beginning of this project, we had a three-day workshop with the design team and their experts who are presenting today. It was enlightening to learn from their experience how the shelter guidelines and best practices would be implemented in a new facility. It's totally different to try to make them fit into a current facility that isn't built for those things. Our current facility is cramped, does not have a good workflow, and most spaces have many functions that shouldn't be combined, such as surgery, euthanasia, and quarantine cat area. One major stressor to our animal staff and the people that we serve are that all animals enter the shelter through the same room, which you can see here on the left, and that is consequently very busy. The room that is used as a surgery room was not designed for that specialty function, which is a great hindrance to our care and to our shelter veterinarian. As you can see here, some surgeries must take place on the floor. Our old building cannot accommodate standard surgery equipment, which means that attracting veterinarians graduating now or in the future is unlikely. Due to the building being added on to multiple times, the maintenance needs are spread out in multiple rooms. These rooms are completely full of the equipment needed to keep the building functioning. Seasonal changes such as springtime really highlight our building's weaknesses, such as maintaining ideal temperatures throughout the building. There is not a shortage of urgent work orders being sent to our maintenance department. I'm filled with hope for how much better we can improve our services when I look at the new building design, and I hope you are too.
Thank you, Kimberly. I wanted to review those project goals that were outlined initially, boy, quite a while ago when we started on this project, but they became our guiding light as we made tough decisions on right sizing this facility or making economical decisions to get it within the cost constraints. So the first desire was to prioritize the properly functioning shelter space, like Kimberly mentioned, optimizing the size for animal care and capacity, to provide for all required staff functions and responsibility throughout the building, and the majority of which goes on beyond, behind the scenes. The second was to dedicate and specifically design the space, including indoor and outdoor housing, and care of distinct and separate animal types and conditions. We're going to walk you through the plan to show how we've done that, both in the care and management of the housing, but also in the flow of traffic to and out of the facility, especially to the outdoor exercise and pens. And then third, a design solution that is efficient and maintainable, and this is a constant with working with Fairbanks, North Star Borough Public Works, it's that resiliency of making good decisions now so that you can afford to maintain and operate in the future.
So we've, we've mentioned a couple of times now, the Association of Shelter Veterinarians' Guidelines for the Standards of Care in Animal Shelters. And by the way, they have a companion document for the subarctic conditions in Canada to implement these very same requirements. So what are they? They are Standards for the Care and Welfare of Companion Animals Based on Scientific Evidence and Expert Consensus. They are guidelines to reduce overcrowding, stress in animals, disease, and improve the safety and also the outcome of those animals. I thought for today's meeting, it might be useful to just look at the number five, as it turns out. The five domains that are outlined in the ASV Guidelines are nutrition, environment, health, opportunity, and mental state. So basically, their guidelines are intended to support each one of these elements. There is also the ASPCA Guidelines, or Five Freedoms, as they call it, which actually, they didn't, these are ones you've probably heard before, but they didn't actually create these. They were created by a small animal care council in the UK many years ago, but they've stood the test of time. So they're the freedoms. Freedom from hunger and thirst, freedom from discomfort, freedom from pain, freedom to express normal behavior, and freedom from fear and distress. So it would be the goal of any shelter to try to support all of these things. And the way we do that, and I've sort of selected five premier elements of your design to make sure that we can get there. The first is to implement capacity for care. Capacity for care involves determining the correct number of housing units and the infrastructure to support it so that you can handle the anticipated number of animals to be taken in, but not so much that you overload the shelter. It's a very common phenomenon that if you build a shelter too big, guess what? The animals will come, and if you don't have the staff and the cost of staff, by the way, to support all that, then the animal's length of stay, we call it in the shelter, gets longer and longer, and it can just sort of feed on itself and create a very, you know, not very good outcome. So it's very important, and you have the blessing of an excellent staff here who is a director, who's doing minor miracles with what you have to work with. Now, their average length of stay is six days for animals, dogs and cats, and that's excellent for the type of facility that they're operating from. Well, enough already on implement capacity of care, and that's number one. Let's, oh yeah, let's just quickly, I'm just going to hit these other items, but the second one actually is very important, too, efficient pathways and separation of species. That's a critical function of the shelter, and I'll show you how we've designed for that. And an area in which the current shelter fails because it was never designed for that, and over the years, they've just had to make multiple uses of many different spaces. Third is double compartment housing for cats and dogs. This is very important because of two things. One, nature has provided us all, humans and animals alike, with the concept of hygiene. And so for animals, it means you want one side of the kennel to be provided for living, eating, sleeping, and through a transfer door, the other side is basically the bathroom. I mean, it doesn't work out that way all the time, but it does often enough to where that's an important ingredient in the animal's well-being while being held by humans. Four is, of course, we want to promote adoption, keep length of stay low, and also, very importantly, not forget the people that are taking care of the animals. They have to have the right tools and spaces and adjacencies to be able to do that. Sorry, next slide. See. Yeah, and in terms of thermal comfort and animal health, particularly important in subarctic regions, the ASV Guidelines call for 30% to 70% relative humidity, so it'd be ideal to have a humidification system in the project, and one is included as an alternative, additive alternative, we can talk about that later. And then the environmental temperature control needs to be between 64 and 80. Of course, that varies depending on the breed, but you want to be in that sweet spot somewhere, and this would be the best possible heating system using a mix of radiant hydronic heating in the floor and air-based heating in the air. So it gives you the benefit of both of those, and we can talk about that later.
Thanks, Bruce. And I'll just mention that the, your double compartment description of the kennel is taped out there on the floor, on the right, the existing kennel size is there on the left. So we wanted to touch base on the process. Like I mentioned, we've been working on this for two years now, had some pause in there, but we're eager to be producing on a 95% document, which will be, you know, all of the construction detailing, all of the equipment. We're doing the fixtures furnishing and equipment as well, so it's a very detailed package that the borough will have here in the coming weeks for their review. The borough takes a few weeks in between each, some middle, to do their review and come back with comments, and we go through a thorough process of what is to be included, what is to be revised, and what's to be removed. And we do that in segments along the way. That's the borough practice, that's the way they implement most of their projects, and it is our industry standard. So there's a concept involved, that's about 10% complete, then a 35%, which I think a lot of folks saw and was presented out about a year ago with a series of open houses and public meetings. And then we completed through a 65%, which really gets into more details. And then, again, again, each one of these has a review period of a number of weeks that the Public Works, the stakeholders, all reviewed, and then gave us comments, and we were given a notice to proceed into the next phase. An example of this process is a bit of a reminder to have, maybe have your eyes checked. Is that chart on the left? I'm sorry, it's not very readable. Yeah, well, so if you just squint over the colors, the orange highlighted in there, this is just a snippet of one of those phases from 65 to 95, where we met, every orange color is a meeting with the leadership in the Public Works Department. So over this process, we counted up all of those times, and it was 21 meetings of review, coordination, collaboration, site visits, and such. And so some of these images show how those meetings went with Dr. Pinto and her colleagues and staff, Sandy meetings at the, we were up in the mayor's office, like Bruce mentioned earlier, for a number of days. We were at our office, we were at Public Works office, we were at the shelter. So it's very important that we, our process includes, you know, a bit of discovery and investigation, but also listening and learning, and then looping that back to, you know, review, to solutions and review, and that we do that all along the way. So I appreciate everyone's time that have contributed to this because it's, it is important that we get it right, and it's a collaboration, and it's truly your building, and it needs to represent the needs. So with Luke and Sandy and Kimberly and Dr. Pinto leading those stakeholder meetings, it was very informative, and so that's a little snapshot of the process. And then we wanted to go over the design, and by the way, all the images of these animals that I put in here, they're Trip, Cleo, Penny, Latoya, Silas, Zulu, Keaton, Clooney, Isabella, have all been adopted, except Penny, who is the husky, not on this photo, but the first photo. So I'm proud to say that in just a number of weeks, they're out of the shelter. So I'll turn it over to Mark to talk a bit about the site a minute.
Thanks, Tracy. Hello, everyone. My name is Mark Kimmer. I'm a landscape architect with Beddoesworth North. As Tracy mentioned, I'm her business partner and work out of Anchorage. Despite my Anchorage status, I figure that a lion's share of our favorite projects for landscape architecture have actually been in Fairbanks, Ryan Elementary School or Middle School, Chief Andrew Isaac Health Center, numerous projects on Fort Main, Wright, to include Hangers Company Operations Facilities, Barracks, a Child Development Center and Housing, and then the Pioneer Park Master Plan that was adopted a few years ago was our work, and we're real proud of that and are quite familiar with working in Fairbanks and super happy to be here to share with you on this site tonight. So this slide, there's an overall, the red is the overall site. It's south-central in town, in the community, in the borough, so it's a great location for access by folks that are visiting and by staff via the Old Rich. The zoning is general use, which is appropriate. Again, the site and adjacent uses, we feel are outstanding for this type of use due to the incinerator, barking, some other sounds you might hear, as well as potential odors. It's approximately five acres in size. All the appropriate utility connectivity was there. It has great site soil conditions, and Tracy mentioned, one of the drivers before was safety and security. So we, this, this project provides that by being able to provide outdoor space for the dogs and other animals like horses, goats, I guess those are exotics. the dogs and other animals like horses, goats, I guess those are exotics. But it's a, it's far superior to the current situation. The site plan that Tracy put up on the screen shows the building in blue. I think a lot of you folks are familiar with what this looks like. But we've divided the site design up into two distinct zones. To the upper left is the public zone, so you can see an arrival drive off Leisure Street. Good wayfinding, there'll be a wayfinding sign as you come in, a drop-off right at the main entry, and then 31 parking spaces available for visitors. The neat thing about this site and its size is that you can actually look into the future. So we can actually have planned, if necessary, to expand that parking out to add it up to 44 spaces. The other entry off of Leisure Street accesses the staff area. So there's staff parking in the number of 31 spaces, or I'm sorry, 30. There's a digital gate with a controller. The entire back part of that site, you can see from the north corner of the building all the way around to the southwest corner of the building, that dark line that goes on the edge of the site, is eight-foot-high chain link fencing that does have privacy slats in it, and there's other fenced areas within there. But we've made it so the vehicular circulation and pedestrian circulation for public and staff are totally separate. The area in the back has ample storage for the containers. The shelter currently stores materials in. There are trailers, and there's also space for good snow clearing operations and snow storage down in that south corner, and then out in the bigger main area in the northeast Some things that Bruce will mention here in a bit in terms of circulation and separation of public and staff, you'll see that on the interior as well. And with this, the staff has direct access to kennel rooms and to the pens, or the animals, rather, have direct access out into that back area for exercise. And the stalls for the exotics are appropriately sized compared to what they have now in particular. That's all I have for the site. Thanks for your time, and I'll pass it back to Tracy.
Thanks, Mark. For orientation purposes, imagine this building that you're seeing now at an angle is now, when you start seeing the plans, we rotated it so we could get it as large as possible on the slide. So while that north entry is up there for the public, let's say the south is more the private, and staff, we're rotating that 45 degrees clockwise. But first, we wanted to show you a current rendering of the exterior. It's basically a rectangular box, and we were directed to remove the clear story for cost consideration, so that has been removed. We have simplified the entry main canopy while still providing a lighted, protected entry sequence for this public, you know, entity of a, of a facility. We have a long drop-off lane there, the front curb, accessible parking just out of this image. The idea was to accommodate open houses and fairs and rabies clinics and such, so that the parking sort of accommodated some of those uses.
So as Tracy mentioned, now the plan is rotated, so we're looking at it left to right. I'm glad you pointed that out, Tracy, because that can be a little mind-bender if you're not used to doing these things. I mentioned earlier that we have, one of the key features is separation of species and efficient pathways in the building. These are hugely important for animal shelters. And what we've given you here is a design that's optimized in that regard. The entire building is designed around these flow pathways, which ensure that the spaces that we provide are going to be in the right location and serve the shelter in the best way. The green arrows are public access. So up there in the upper right says public access. That's the public entry that Tracy just showed an image of. So the public will come in at that point. They'll be greeted by an ample reception area. All the buildings have vestibules on them for climatic concerns. And when you're in the reception area, there's an opportunity to go right, and you're in the cat ward, so to speak. If you go left, you're on, in the dog environment. And so those two things have to be separated, and they are in the shelter design. The public also has access to a community meeting room, which can be made available after the shelter hours are over. You can hold meetings in that room. And those have direct access out to dog run. So, for example, if you have an animal education class, you can take animals right out into a yard space and try out what you learned in that class. Meanwhile, on the other end of the facility, there is a public access specifically for night drop, and that's a green arrow there. There's a separate room for that. Other than that, the idea is to basically, and what makes this plan so unique, I think, is it's very simple. It's a rectangular plan, and we have the public on one end and the staff on the other. Sounds like rocket science, right? But you'd be surprised how many plans evolve into something more than that, and it gets, doesn't get better, I'll put it that way. We've managed, and Bettisworth has been great to work with us on that, is keep this plan exceptionally simple and design it entirely around these flows. Only in that way do you end up with a really functional facility. There's 10 quarantine dog kennels located, five isolation dog kennels, 24 flex adoption kennels, and there's a future potential, or if it's done with the design additive alternate, six on the end of the building. Other concepts here briefly would be that ACO officers can bring animals in from the left, where it says staff access, and it would be through a sally port if that's enacted as also an additive alternate. Those animals can be brought directly back to the quarantine area where they can be admitted and put in a cage, and then the ACO can go off at that point. So that access is available 24 hours. Lastly, I would just mention that we have placed, we've managed to place, this sounds a little crazy, too, but the central food laundry area in the center of the building. And that's important because that's where immediate access and convenience can be provided to all the staff. A lot of it will be off of carts that can replenish in that location and get quickly either to cat housing or dog housing. A common mistake in shelters, even from those that should know better, is they put that back by the loading dock, so to speak. And that's the worst place to put it, because now you forever condemn the facility to be served with a long run to the back of the facility. Meanwhile, you only have deliveries every so often, so it makes sense, and you have to plan it this way. Let's look at the next slide, then. This plan, this is the same plan, but it shows, reveals the walls and furnishing and caging a bit better. And you can see the dog kennels in the lower run there, along central corridor. And then there's a secondary corridor that I mentioned up above where cats would access. The medical treatment area for the shelter is located just above that last set of dog kennels, the quarantine dog kennels. And then lastly, there's ACO on the upper left corner, and the night drop room is highlighted in color there on that end of the building. And again, that has public access and would be available after hours. Next slide. So here we have a view of the reception area. There'll be multiple stations there, and where the public would be received. These days, and your shelters operated more, ever since the pandemic, more on an appointment basis, which is a good practice to prevent overcrowding in reception areas like this, and also serves to separate species. Some shelters you'll go to, there's dogs and cats intermingling in the foyer. It's not a great thing, so here, that can be managed through an appointment-based system. Next one. Okay, so here is the drop-off kennel, the night drop. And there's sort of a transparent view of it on the left, that three-dimensional view, which shows that you've come in the building through a public door, and there's five kennels located there where presumably a dog would be left, left in one of those kennels, and it locks behind itself. So once the dog is in there, it can't be stolen later. Sadly, that's a phenomenon with animal shelters is animals get stolen, so we don't want that to happen. The picture on the upper right is the existing drop-off caging. It's sort of a pass-through solution. I think this room that's been developed is a much superior one. For one thing, you can have an access door, as shown in that 3D diagram, into the room from the staff area of the shelter. And this, this slide's a good one because it reveals the benefit of the double housing for dogs. So these are the dog kennels. And I didn't mention the second benefit of double-sided kenneling, which is you can move the animal in one side and you can clean the other side, reducing staff. Did I mention that? Well, anyway. It reduces the stress on the animal and makes the shelter easier to clean because there's less handling of the animal. And that's been proven in, in studies, in part by UC Davis, I might mention. The number of kennels, there are 39 kennels to be provided, and importantly, they are all double-sided kennels. They're all larger, and they all have the proper environmental controls, the proper sanitary drainage. They are altogether different than the kennels you have now. So you can't really compare existing to new without talking about the separate functions for quarantine, isolation, and flex adoption. So you got, this is a really solid set of kenneling for your shelter. And we'll turn it back to Tracy. By the way, we're almost done, in case anybody's wondering. Tracy.
Thanks, Bruce. I want to identify two of the four additive alternates, these design alternates, these options, should we be able to afford them, they would be constructed in line and in sequence with the project. Two of them are physical elements there. Noted on the far left is the sally port, this drive-through garage bay, which would be greatly beneficial for the ACO, for deliveries, for unloading, unloading of animals, and it fits a trailer and vehicle within there, and direct access inside the facility. And then the other is the addition of six double-compartment kennels, which, again, in the emergency case, could be used for 12 smaller kennels. And then additional get-acquainted room there on the far right. So, you know, should that be afforded, that could, that whole wing right there could be dedicated just to puppies, for example, or to a, to something, if you, should you get a flock of chickens or something. It seems like some, anything goes sometimes, doesn't it? So those are things that we design, we hope for, we prioritize with Public Works input and direction. The humidification is also another one of those desirable features because of the guideline information. And then also additional finishes we identified as opportunities that we could invest into while still considering the budget and constraints. So we're happy to answer questions on all of those, but I just wanted to highlight on those additional design considerations that we have implemented into this design. So, and Bruce talked a little bit about the capacity. So that capacity analysis was done over a five-year analysis. It also included the community size and projection considerations into this sizing. We use shelter medicine trends. We use the expertise of Bruce and his staff to incorporate those. We use the staff experience and expertise and input to this plan. We provided for future growth considerations and improvements. We cited it, like Mark mentioned, for those future opportunities on this property, where, what could be considered where. We use the ASV guidelines, and we programmed this for the length of stay that Bruce, Bruce mentioned for these animals, the consideration. It's so important. Like I mentioned, these animals, most of them that I took pictures of not too long ago, are now adopted, and we're so happy to hear that and be a part of their story. Thank you.
Thank you very much, experts in the room and experts on animal shelters and Fairbanks engineering, as we need it here done to have a building and a plan and a proposal that can last another 50 years. Because before we go on and open it up to questions, I want to make sure I take an opportunity to thank those that have gotten us here and that we are having a discussion about a 50-year-old building because of the work that our Public Works staff does every day across the borough, but especially on this building. It's held together with Fairbanks' ingenuity, everything from duct tape to tie wire while keeping it safe for our employees there and our staff at the animal control facility. I ask them to do a lot at our Public Works Department, everything from random questions to large projects and designs and running them through the wringer. So I want to say thank you to everybody from the director to the project managers, the engineers, the architects, and everybody that I go in there when I need a hammer or a tape measure. Thank you to our Public Works Department for keeping this facility up and running and helping us get here today so that we can have a good dialogue and allow transparency and sunlight on this project, so people can get a good feel for where we're at, why this design is, was what we've come to, and understand that we have experts. And I want to, in response to your question, Mr. Guttenberg, during that presentation, the answer to how many years left in this is that it is well beyond its useful life, as described. So it's not that there's a set date, but many years ago, it passed its useful life, and so we are here now discussing how we reset our time clock. And on the next note, I want to thank our animal control staff. One thing that Bruce from, with Indigo had mentioned was the statistic that our average length of stay is six days for an animal in our shelter. This morning, when we were talking with Dr. Scott Lerned, he said, he asked, what is your average day stay? Because in the Matt Sue comments, the comments on the Matt Sue shelter that he made, there it was 20 days. And I said, I believe it's a stay, average stay for the animal there. And I said, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of eight, but maybe I'm wrong. And he said, that would be amazing if it was eight. And we have six, is the stat. So the work that they do every day to keep that shelter up and running, animals with as little stress as possible with the facility that they have at their disposal is beyond commendable, and it's minor miracles, as Bruce said, every day there. So thank you to all the staff, the front of house, the back of house, the animal control staff that work there every day. During my tour, they asked me one thing, and it was, hey, do you notice anything? And I said, no. And they said, well, that's because you don't smell anything in this facility. And as other audits or reviews of what they do come in, people say, you almost never find an animal shelter that doesn't smell. And that just goes to show with the work that they do there, keeping it clean, scrubbing down all the non-standard surfaces that are 50 years old now is amazing. So thank you for the work you guys do there. Thank you for Public Works Department, and thank you for the experts, because we wouldn't be here with our community and being able to take care of our animals like we are into the Animal Control Commission, also in the animal control staff. This job might be hard for us here. Dealing with kids on the school board might be harder, but dealing with people's animals might just be the hardest task that anybody has in this community. So thank you for everything you do. And with that, I'll open it up to the Assembly and the Animal Control Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hopkins, and thank you to the project team for a very informational presentation. At this time, questions are in order from any of the commissioners. Commissioner Rosenberg.
Yes, I have a few questions and concerns. Looking at the diagram, we have the term exotics, and that could mean anything from a snake to a bird to a goat. We have had a large number of rabbits coming through, and that's continuing. We've had goats, chickens. There are times when we have six, eight, 10 chickens, and I beg my neighbor who has chickens to take a few. I want to make sure that how this is set up, that there's accommodation for that. So, you know, when we think of exotic, we think of a snake or maybe a hamster, something in a cage. That could go in the lobby if it needed to. But these other things, especially when we get numbers of them, where are they going to go? The sally port, I think, is essential, not only for security and, you know, when you're unloading a truck, but some of the deceased animals and very vicious animals that the officers bring in should not be going through a publicly viewed space. So that's another concern. Secure parking. I work in that neighborhood. I'm a case manager with homeless people. I'm a case manager with homeless people. I'm regularly out on weekends and nights in South Fairbanks. And staff come in very early sometimes or have to come in late at night or the officers. And we need something very, very secure for that. The double kennels are ideal because when you have a snowstorm and three staff call in sick or COVID or whatever, or a very anxious animal, you can put them on one side, clean it, throw a dog biscuit, have them go on the other side. You know, it may not be ideal, but it's reality. So I'm hoping all of that. And lastly, and then I'll be quiet. I'm regularly at Chief Andrew Isaac with clients. And the parking lot there is very, very difficult unless you have a tiny little car. So driving a van or just a regular truck that many of us drive, parking there is very, very difficult. And I can tell you more than once I parked in handicapped because I wouldn't be able to get the client out with their walker if I parked in a regular spot. Because people will be bringing animals in, coming out with animals, back and forth, please, and most of us drive larger vehicles, trucks or whatever. Please make sure that the parking accommodates that and is not standard mall parking. And those are my comments at the moment. And the shelter fund is available. And I'm sure we'll do some big project, whether it's a memorial garden outside or beefing up the surgical suite. We'll do something that's very visible and large. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So are there any particular questions for Dr. Cole? Any questions for Dr. Cole? Ms. Wilson?
So I guess I'm more curious about the surgery area and what kind of surgery are we anticipating in here? I heard that we were talking about very specific types now, but this is a pretty large surgical area. So are we anticipating using that more?
Is that to Dr. Cole?
Dr. Cole, can you jump into where Inbert is sitting there? Yeah, thank you. Sorry for swapping around. Thank you.
My understanding, that would probably be more of a question for Dr. Pinto. But my understanding is it's supposed to be just primarily spays and neuters?
I think that's a great idea. Dr. Pinto, are you able to answer that? Can you jump into the mic so we can hear it? Thank you. Sorry about all the table shifting. Appreciate that.
We're not used to such a full house. Well, we are, but mostly they sit out here.
Okay. Now can everyone hear me? The surgical suite that is going to be in the new animal shelter is intended for spays and neuters. The hope is that we can also take care of some of the smaller problems that our borough-owned animals have in-house rather than having to send them out. There is enough space theoretically that if we have funding for equipment, we can start cleaning teeth and cut down on length of stay. But it's going to be almost entirely spays and neuters, perhaps some small mass removals, and it's going to be for borough-owned animals.
And a follow-up?
Ms. Wilson?
So how large is this area compared to what there is currently? And if it's a lot larger, I guess I'm trying to figure out why that would be.
The surgical room itself is very close in size to the room that we're using as an entire veterinary suite right now. The big difference here and the big reason is that we are able to, with enough space, have sanitary measures in effect, safety measures in effect, and be able to keep the stress of our animals down by separating dogs and cats. So at this point, my dogs are all recovering in the same room where I'm doing surgery. And there is a real risk every single day of having either a dog fight because there's no way to separate them, or having a dog drown because the drain backs up onto the floor when they're waking up. Or having like a cat severely injured because we can't keep them away from the dogs. Not only that, but just the basic premise of when I need to do a surgery, we have to anesthetize the animal, we have to shave the hair, we have to do a surgical preparation. That should be done in a separate room so that surgery can truly stay clean and sterile. And I can't do that now.
And then lastly, could you just address, we heard that the floors are heated and they might get too hot for animals after surgery? I mean, I don't know enough about this to...
So after surgery, our biggest concern is actually hypothermia, the animals getting too cold. And there are a whole host of guidelines with making sure they have blankets or towels underneath. The new plan includes having a heated floor area for those animals. It's a very light heat. It adds a small amount of warmth, but not in a dangerous zone. We also do monitor temperatures pretty closely, like body temperatures.
Thank you. If there are no other questions for Dr. Cole specifically? Dr. Cole specifically?
Yes.
Yours is?
Yeah.
Dr. Guttenberg? Okay, please.
Thank you.
And remember, Dr. Cole's a volunteer. She doesn't work for a...
Either doctor, it didn't matter. So my question deals with the abnormal situation and how that's handled. I mean, we heard it's spay and neuters. But when something else happens, what is the process? And how, is this new facility designed to facilitate getting something happened to another clinic or handling it in-house? How is that functioning, functionality in this process?
Yeah, I think that's probably more oriented towards you guys.
Yeah, so... One more time, I'm just going to ask for questions for Dr. Cole, who is not the doctor at...
I don't, I don't do, I don't practice at the shelter. I have been through the shelter. We do work on shelter animals at my facility, but I don't practice at the current shelter.
She's a professional expert here today. Okay. Do you have a question, Ms. Haney, for Dr. Cole? Okay.
Hi. Who's the firm that you used for your facility?
Similar to how these folks have done it, I had a partnership where I used an architectural firm to help with my floor plan. That was a veterinary-specific architect. And then I did use a local architect for the main design and build.
Do you remember who you used?
Cedar.
Thank you.
Mr. Crass?
And this is a bit more of a, from an economic perspective, for, as a business owner. Do you, we've gotten some comments that there may be some impact on private businesses by the borough building the shelter. Would you anticipate the enlarged animal shelter having an impact on your veterinary practice?
No, other than potentially having more pet owners in the community that we can serve.
Thank you.
For Dr. Cole?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you, are you one of the veterinarians that help provide emergency services after our care?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. I'd like to speak off the record sometime. Good job. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks so much for being here this evening. It looks like we've exhausted all questions for you and really appreciate you participating this evening. Thank you. So in my queue, I have Commissioner Swan, Assemblymember Guttenberg, and Assemblymember Reese Ramos. Commissioner Swan.
Thank you very much. And thank everyone for coming up tonight and participating in this. I have a couple of questions regarding the environment that's created in this new shelter. One of them regard, is in regards to heating systems. And my main thing is dogs. I'm not really good with cats. I have a couple, well, we, my wife and I have a couple of them. But dogs are really my bigger concern. We could have at any given time in that dog room, everything from big, heavy-coated Alaskan Malamutes to little Mexican Hairless in terms of breeds. And each of those breeds have their own demands for a comfortable environment. One of my concerns is using this in-floor slab heating is that the floor itself may become much too warm for the dogs to be able to tolerate. So I'm curious as to what design features will help ensure that the floor does not get any hotter than, say, about 84 degrees Fahrenheit.
Ms. Vanderstel, do you want to answer that question?
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to explain a little bit more about the radiant heat. The radiant heat is not directly underneath the kennels. It is labyrinth through the walkways. So while these kennel spaces have direct access to the exterior for the animals to exercise or possibly go to the dog pen for a visitation, tracking in moisture and snow and that, the walkways are heated throughout the facility. There are 17 different zones of that heat. And it's a combination. And they are monitored and maximum shutout. So that will be dialed in and able to be monitored with the system controls. The kennels, you know, this is open-air room, but there's a combination of air heat, you know, typical ventilation heat and the radiant in the slab.
Thank you for that answer. Assemblymember Guttenberg?
Thank you. I'm going to move away from the animals. If you look at Slide 23, dealing with the parking lots and basically, snow removal, the ability of snow equipment, snow-moving equipment to move in and out of there efficiently in a place to move snow. We don't have to move it far, but, you know, a year like today, you know, sometimes the right-angle corners or the curves or a lot of those things. I urge you to look at the ability of, to match the equipment that the borough has to the parking lot size. Make sure that it can be done expeditiously and fast. And I have another question. So as, if I may, is the, all of this stuff that's going on with the animal control, the staff, has anybody done a walkthrough exercise, right? Like taped down the new layout of the floors and the kennels and walking through and just seeing what it would actually be like to facilitate the entrance and exit of, and movement of animals through the process? I mean, it's nice to see it on a plan and say that they walk right up here and then they go over here. But an exercise with staff, dealing with the dogs and how they move them, has that, something like that been done?
Take Mark's thunder on the snow. You can see that in the parking lots, there's quite a bit of this paved area that has maybe nothing at the end of an aisle or parking stalls without curb stops and that. So the idea, there's a whole snow management. And it's all been reviewed by Public Works to push, and then the drainage swells. So snow storage is near and dear to us. It also, this design also accommodates the fire access lanes that we are required. So some of those, even those paved lanes in the back towards the dog yards, you'll see they terminate at a sort of a dead-end stop. That's to allow snow to be pushed and cleared and collected at those locations without disrupting, you know, the walkways and the access to different places. So it's no storage and collection and drainage. It was definitely...
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll address your other question, sir. I think you have a good point. There's nothing like, "Show me and I'll believe it." We have new tools these days that sort of transcends that method. And the entire building has been modeled into a building information model. It's a parametric model where every bit and piece has its point in space. And what that enables, aside from just getting a better construction result, it enables preparation of exacting rendering, some of which you've seen today, that can give somebody the exact idea of what it's going to be in a given space. So for example, walking down the hallway, a view can be made that shows, you know, anybody how that space will be used. And then dimensions are always a little bit of a wild card, but it's pretty effective, like on hallways, is to tape out dimensions of how wide it's going to be. And there was a lot of discussion about hallway width in particular, just because of that point, you have people with maybe an animal on leash crossing each other. The main hallway, by the way, is a little wider to allow that. The other hallway didn't need that as much. And, you know, the building overall is constrained by, ultimately by cost. There's a lot of things, I would just say, that we could do or might do for you. But these are exactly the things that we think meet your exact demand. We can always add, we could make the, as with the example of the hallways, sure, we could make them wider. But every square foot we add to the building, as you're aware, adds to the cost. So it's sort of a sweet spot that you're looking for here. And I think staff is pretty keenly aware of what they'll be getting with the built result, partly because of these parametric models.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Reese Ramos?
I have a question and a statement. And unfortunately, my question is for Dr. Pinto. When you were speaking before, I just wanted to clarify, have there been dogs that have drowned while they're in recovery?
No, there have not. But it has been a genuine worry when I have two inches of water on the floor.
Thank you. And then my statement, if I may. We have a new administration. There's a lot more people involved with this project right now, so, that are here. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware, kind of piggybacking on what Commissioner Rosenberg said. I work in the state building, just down the road from where this is going to be. And the first three times that I drove the state vehicle when I moved to that position, the first time, there was no catalytic converter. Six months later, we got it back and I went to drive it again and there was no catalytic converter. Went back, got another catalytic converter. When I went to drive it the third time, there was no gas because someone had drilled out the gas tank and siphoned all the gas. So just security is important in that area. Thank you.
Assemblymember Rodderman?
Thank you. Piggyback a little bit on the snow removal, just a suggestion. So in the visitor parking area, we have that divider, if you will. I understand, a lot of years plowing the snow. When I plow snow, I don't want to be plowing snow. I want to be done plowing snow. And I'm going to tell you, the person that has to plow that parking lot is going to be cursing you guys up one side and down the other to have to go around that, remove it, just like you did in the staff parking area. Push it right through, push it out into the grass. That's just a suggestion. So let's get to the big-ticket item, cost. The Matt Sue Animal Shelter, and I don't know the size, don't know the square footage. I just know that the cost was significantly less. That facility, I think it was built in 2021. Where the last, I remember the first time when we were at 35%, ran some quick numbers, we were at almost $2,000 a square foot. I need some input on that.
Real fast on that, before I hand it off to the design team, the Matt Sue Shelter was built in 1996, 1994, and then began to be refurbished based on these comments in 2001, 2002. So it was built in the 90s. And their current update was just a, an expansion of that facility and a remodel of some of the problems that they ran into.
And that was in 2021, I believe?
Something like that. These are, this from Design Lerned that was emailed to the Assembly was from 2021, so sometime between then and now. So yes. Additionally, before I pass it off to the design team to talk about it, the cost estimates were run through a third-party review. But I don't know the name of that consultant. It's a local entity. But they ran it through their own modeling and it came up with a very similar price as what we, as what we're understanding today with the $33 million price tag. So it's not just our number. It was also reviewed and confirmed by a third-party analysis. So with that, I will pass it off to Ms. Vanderstel.
We're going to give you the trifecta. I'll go next and then Bruce. We toured that lovely facility. We've toured several animal shelters in the state. Dana and myself and another colleague with your Jonathan Shambhar here of Public Works had a really gracious tour from that user and a lot of follow-up questions along the way. What we understood and what we saw, we learned a lot about the night drop-off there. So they're a good resource for how that might work, was it's basically a residential-framed house, almost. I mean, originally, the original. They've added on quite a bit, much like your existing animal shelter. It's been added on. So that original construction and even the addition is quite a bit different than what we're suggesting here, which is more of a commercial-grade borough standard for a public facility like this. for a public facility like this, fifty-year lifespan. It's steel, it's, you know, concrete. It is, it's of a different type of building structure.
I'll just add to that, that as you're probably aware, animal shelters are a special building type. There's a lot going on in them. There's expensive finishes that need to be put in for hygienic purposes. There's heavy-duty construction for the kennel areas, which are masonry. And there's a lot of moving parts to them. There's medical treatment areas. I mean, there's all sorts of things. So they're gonna cost more than your average office building. That said, what we do on shelter design, there always is a bottoms-up cost estimate. That's what's been prepared and has been reviewed at each step and peer-reviewed. But we also look at the cost of shelters from the tops down. So to do that, we maintain a list of shelter costs over time. And we update that to reflect current dollars. In other words, if it was a shelter built five years ago, it's gonna cost more in today's dollars. We find average cost out of that process to current, and we've compared that to the cost for the Fairbanks, new Fairbanks Animal Shelter. And it's right on par with where the expected cost would be in Alaska for an animal shelter to be built. So, you know, if there's data that you would like to provide regarding Matsui, we could take a look at it and then provide a direct comparison with the cost of this shelter. But that's why we do the tops-down thing, because it really just, at the end of the day, it says, "Is this cost reasonable for this shelter?" And right now, it's at the average of shelter cost. Many building types also, you'll see that there's much more expensive shelters built, and then there's also some on the lower end. So that's why we do a grouping, and we look at the average cost, and it provides a test of reasonable, at least one test of reasonable.
Okay, thank you. And just one more quick question. Could we go to slide, oh boy, twenty-six, I think it was? Yeah, twenty-six. So, in the middle, here, I see a janitor closet. I see nothing else for storage. Am I missing something? Did I miss a storage room or something? That's a pretty small closet for a seventeen thousand-square-foot facility.
There is storage. I don't know if I have a mouse. No, I don't have a mouse. There is storage, first of all, there's storage built in every one of the dog kennel rooms. You can see there's a series of casework along a wall that's locked for use of storage immediate needs to those kennel rooms. So each one of those rooms has dedicated storage. There's a dedicated storage room towards the medical suite, so further down that core, with double doors on either side, single doors, but on the opposite sides, there's a hall storage room. Do you see that one labeled a little more to the left of that janitor? And then there's storage within the food, service, and laundry. And then also, there's storage within, you know, I would say, built-in casework sort of sprinkled throughout, whether it accessed from a hall or within the rooms. It's a little hard to identify those lines versus what a kennel might be. But we're currently doing the complete fixture furnishing and equipment package, and Dana and I in our offices orchestrating that. So with the stakeholders and the leadership, we have gone through every piece of equipment and every piece of, like, furniture that would be included in here to make sure storage is accounted for within the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Swan, I do see your hand, but I'm going to let some others who have not spoken yet have a question. And then for the group, I just want to announce that we'll take a ten-minute break at 7:30, and we'll reconvene back at 7:40. Okay, so I'm gonna go to Commissioner Rudy.
Hi there. I had a couple of questions. One, since we talked about snow a little bit, looking at the drawings, are all of the roof surfaces flat? And is there any concern with snow load as a lifelong Alaskan that's had flat roof, snow problems on many properties? Just wondering if there's any angle to any of the roofs, or if they are flat like they look like.
We would consider them low-slope roofs, so they're all sloped to internal drains. That's something else that the borough standard requires. You'll notice, like, on all the recent school projects and that, it prevents snow and unwanted sliding of snow that could cause a hazard, much like your existing kennel now. Let me get to the photo. That has ice damming directly onto a walkway. That is a hazard that the borough does not allow. So, we are low-slope, internally drained. It has equipped for, you know, the snow loads code required and will not be required to be shoveled.
Thank you. And just sort of a follow-up to that one, the, on the slide that showed the virtual image of the new entrance, I don't know what number it is, I'm sorry. The, the, yes, thank you, the covered walkway at the entrance there, will there be a slope there or gutters around the edge? Because you can just see the sea of ice that that entryway would be, just like everywhere else in town is right now.
Yes, yep. It has a curb, and it's drained to a landscape area. So, hard to see in this view, but yes, it is a controlled drainage off of there, and it will not slope onto the concrete or the sidewalk.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Sherman.
So I have some questions about looking, I was looking at slide twenty-five, but I'm also thinking about what the Shelter Vet, American Shelter Vet guidelines say, that shelter admission areas should be separated from adoptions and other client-facing areas. And I, this is a little bit of a new world for me, looking at blueprints, but I have some questions about some possible movement from, for animals when they arrive in the shelter. So maybe, I mean, I know you don't, it doesn't seem like you have a laser pointer, but maybe somebody could walk it through, like, it's got a couple of pieces, or three or four, maybe more pieces. So if someone's bringing an adult dog that's spayed, already spayed, doesn't need a, vaccines are up to date, and it's being surrendered by the owner, so the owner knows they have to give it up, are they coming in through that shelter, that public-access spot, and then walking? Can somebody walk me through how that is? Do you want me to give them all to you, or do you want to do them one at a time?
We do need to have a microphone recording for the individuals in line. Thank you.
Thank you for being patient with me.
Okay, good question. And to answer that question, the public entrance would be the primary location for people bringing in animals like that. So if it's a surrender, there are other alternatives to come to the rear of the facility, but primarily, they would come in the entrance, they would be received. It probably would be an appointment session. And then, the animal would come down to this point, and it's really headed towards the dog intake room that you'll see is on the secure side. So they'd be escorted back or greeted by a staff member here to surrender the dog. That staff member would have the option to bring the person into the intake room.
And it does look like they're gonna have to go with this dog that's potentially, I mean, it's gonna be euthanized, it's not such a big deal, I suppose. I don't mean to say that lightly, but it's gonna be walking by the isolation kennels? So it looks like even healthy dogs, dogs that are going into quarantine are gonna, everybody's walking right by there?
Well, yeah, in the main hallway, they would come here and be escorted back or just brought back to the intake area. Yeah, this hallway is intended to serve all the rooms on this pathway, whether they be flex adoption, or isolation, quarantine, et cetera.
So if someone, and I, I hope it doesn't seem like I'm torturing you, but I've been doing a deep dive on all the things people have given me to think about. So, an adult dog that is a stray, unknown history? Someone is bringing it in, found him running on the road. He, they don't know much about him. It's not drop-off cages because it's open hours, same thing?
Well, so now you're getting into the operation of the facility.
So a person, a citizen, is bringing this dog in?
So there's a lot of variability in how shelter staff will operate this new facility. Well, one thing to be clear is it's going to be a different arrangement, of course, than the existing facility. So, shelter staff could decide to bring that dog through the front, or I would say, Sandy might have some comment in that. More likely, you might make arrangements to admit them through the secure gate at the rear of the facility and have staff meet them back here and bring that dog directly into quarantine. So there's, part of the beauty, if you will, of having this flow set up is that you can have options as to where animals come in. And I think it would be a case-by-case, as far as what the particulars of that animal are and the person bringing it in.
As a person who occasionally, the universe throws strays in our way, I say I truly appreciate the intake room that they have and Brittany Ann, who does amazing work, in the back. I don't have to go to the front. People don't need to see me, you know, all of that. That's just, I, thanks for explaining that. And then I'll just give you one more. So someone has an older, large dog with its owners coming in, and they would, they need, they feel like it needs to be euthanized. It's been approved. They have an appointment. And then they also want to take the body with them. Can you give me a possible scenario for what?
That's a good one. I'd have to sort of defer to staff how they would handle that. But for something like that, you would want to have, you know, those folks come back to the staff-secure entrance to the facility. So what this means is that there will have to be a protocol when some public member is coming with a need like that, where they're actually admitted from the rear of the facility. There's another optional place, maybe a third, where they could come in. This night-drop pathway is available to the public, and they could be met back here, a little more discreetly and a little more easily, without going through the secure parking area. So, you know, it's kind of like, buildings where you have optional pathways, we find are much more usable and comfortable for operational needs than if there's just one way. Here, I just identified there's actually three different ways that could be resolved. So staff and shelter management can decide how to handle the situation and have these. Right now, the shelter is, you know, poorly provides for that because there's like one entry point where everything's happening.
I know, I'm not in denial that we don't need a new shelter. We do.
What else can I help you with?
I'm gonna take a breath and let someone else have a chance. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to bring the discussion back down to, I think we're at the 10,000-feet level, and just ask some obvious questions that have been asked of me and a person that doesn't work in animal control. Can, it seems to me like a big cost of this is making a surgery center, a hospital basically for animals. Could someone, and I'm not sure who would be the appropriate person to answer this, but what would happen if we did not have a surgery center? Would the number of euthanasias increase drastically without one?
The short answer is, every animal that is adopted out through the shelter must be spayed or neutered. So if we don't have a surgery center in-house, that means that every animal has to wait for an appointment at a veterinary clinic in order to be spayed or neutered, which increases length of stay. The last I checked, we were a couple of weeks out on spay-neuter in general in clinics in the area. So instead of an animal staying for six days, it might be staying for fifteen days just to get spayed in order to be adoptable. That means that the kennels are all full. That means that there's no place to put strays. That means the animals are being euthanized.
Thank you. And I just had one other question. Do we have, by virtue of our really unique community, with a lot of military, a lot of students, people moving in and out of our community quite often, do we have a greater need for adoptions in animal shelters with people relinquishing their pets than other communities? Are we unique?
I don't really know. Do you have insight there?
Yeah, I don't have data to support it, but I don't think so. And anyway, a lot of communities have issues around university towns and so forth, where you have a sort of a transient population going on. So no, I don't think you're anything too out of the ordinary here in Fairbanks.
Thank you.
By the way, I like Fairbanks. You guys are great.
Okay, Ms. Haney.
Hi, thank you very much. And I appreciate, I know maybe you think I've been, some people may think I've been excessively critical of this, but I do appreciate the work. And I know that you guys design phenomenal stuff. So I don't want this in any way to make you feel like your work is inferior, contrary. Your work is extremely good. I'm concerned about, though, the cost of utilities on this facility. I'm not gonna lie. I look at it, and I think about the North Pole Library, and I think about this, and I have to ask, I have to really think about what would be the utilities that we're gonna face on this on an ongoing basis. And if it fell out of the sky for free for us, we have to pay staff, we have to pay utilities. So those are the things that are really concerning me right now. Maybe if you could shed some light on that. Thanks.
The hot seat.
Hello, my name is Marco Stupovich. I'm the project engineer for the Fairbanks North Star Borough in the Public Works Department. I would say for the new facility, it's kind of hard to put a direct number to the utility cost that we would be paying. I would have to say, though, over the last two years, that we've been designing this new project, it's been a reoccurring statement that the existing animal shelter facility is the highest cost per utility per square foot that the borough owns. So I would, I would have to think that for a new facility with new, modern standards, the utility cost per square foot would dramatically go down. But that's all I.
I love it. Indigo is, like, sort of noted for their designs being resilient and alternate-energy-friendly and all that good stuff. Is any of that stuff included in this design?
Yes.
Sorry, I feel weird because I, the commission kind of blocks whoever's answering.
I think within the context of Fairbanks and your extreme temperatures here, Fairbanks has, in the heating world, you look at something called heating-degree days. Fairbanks has about fourteen thousand heating-degree days. And, you know, the coldest spots in the lower forty-eight might be, you know, ten thousand, for example. So it's quite an extreme environment, and you're gonna pay something to heat buildings in this climate. What this building includes is a super-insulated envelope, so the walls are thermally insulated, the roof is thermally insulated. Tracy can address any of those items. One thing to consider would be potential future photovoltaics. It's easier said than done in this climate zone. Where would you put them, and how can you get them on the site? But those things can be added in the future. And then the last thing I'll say is because one of the, we've kept the floor plan very compact. You'll notice it's a rectangle. I call that the shoebox design. It's not an architectural, technical term. It just looks like a shoebox. But what that does is it keeps the overall surface area of the envelope to the volume contained very favorable, so that you don't have a lot of exposure for thermal conductance to the outside. It's pretty simple, really. And then the only other thing you look at is how much glazing is on the building. And I think this building is well within parameter, because any hole you put in a building is kind of a leak, if you will. Of course, if you didn't have any windows in your building, you might not be happy about that. So I think it hits a sweet spot, and I'll use that term, I guess, for the third time tonight, on energy and utility costs overall. The last thing is just fuel source. So Fairbanks, as I understand, is dominated by fuel, oil, still, and natural gas. There is a trend in parts of the rest of the country, particularly where there's not those fourteen thousand heating- I think that's a good idea for many areas of the country, but it's a tough one here because of the heating demand and also probably infrastructural issues. So sorry, that's such a long answer, but I just want you to know that we've thought about that on the design team side, and we've done the logical things here without increasing the cost unduly for the building.
Thank you. I just know that that's what your firm is looking for.
Yes, yes, thank you for that.
And so I was kind of looking for a little bit of that, just kind of curious, any of that was in there, so...
And on the resiliency side, the last point would be, this building will be served by an emergency generator, so that will be an important part of it in the borough's portfolio of buildings that you have that power. So when you do lose power, and I'm sure that will happen many times in the life of this building, you will have emergency power to run it and possibly other borough functions in buildings that aren't protected that way could come to this site and camp out in that public meeting room. Maybe it's not public meetings, it might be a department from a leased building or whatever that needs a home temporarily.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to Commissioner Swan. Then on my list, I have Assemblymember Wilson, Assemblymember Crass, and Commissioner Rudy. Commissioner Swan.
The first question that I have involves the isolation room and the isolation kennels. Looking at the previous floor plan that was presented to us, it looked like the room had a lot, well, a bunch of kennels that all opened up to a common space, and I am curious as to what design features minimize the risk of spreading comorbid diseases within an already ill population? For example, we could have a litter of puppies with parvovirus in one kennel, and in another kennel very close to it have a dog with bordatella, or a dog with distemper, or other diseases. So what design features prevent that cross-contamination of diseases?
So, sir, are you talking about cross-contamination within the isolation ward that has five kennels in it? Or are you talking about between wards?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, within that isolation room, which I presume is where it's intended to house dogs that need to be isolated due to disease.
Right. So what the building can do is provide separate environmental control for that space, and it does. As far as separation for different illness, that becomes an operational part of the program, and if you can't put the animals together, you don't. And so it's kind of as simple as that. And it depends on case by case, and again, it gets into the operation of the shelter, which I have limited capacity to address. Or to put it, it's normal practice to have an isolation ward, and this facility will have one, and it just comes down to how it's operated. There may be extreme conditions, I don't know, where you need to export an animal who's can't be housed in that space.
Okay, so we know that comorbidities is something that we need to be aware of and be careful of. I have a question regarding outside areas. The outside areas, for example, the barn for larger livestock, or the sled dog areas, are those also part of your design responsibilities, or are they, are they going to be designed by someone else, or something else done to put those together?
They are included in this design.
So what, I'm interested primarily in the sled dog area, but it probably pertains to the barn. Now we're dealing with animals that are acclimated to our harsh environment. What considerations in housing for these individual animals have gone into the design, such as insulated dog houses, or insulation for the barn, or, you know, things of that nature?
I think they want me to chime in on this. We would use insulated dog houses like we do now for our sled dogs. The setup would be very similar to what we have now. They'd be on tethers and with insulated dog houses with straw.
Okay, and what about the barn?
It's similar, also similar to what you have existing conditions now, where it's more open and unheated.
Oh, sorry. I'm gonna interject. The barn is much better than what we have now. Much, much better. What we have now isn't, it isn't even like a solid walls, it's three-sided with gaps in it. And the barn that's in this design offers a lot more protection and very safe fencing for various species, so it would keep in goats and horses, and it wouldn't have the chain link where their hooves would get caught. It would be safer fencing.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Wilson.
Thank you, just so you know, Ms. Gardner had her hand up as well. Right, okay. I know there's a lot of people, it's kind of hard to catch everybody. So I just kind of want to go back on how it came up to be 17,737 square feet, which is almost three times as big as right now, with population going down, and it sounds like most of the animals need some more room, but I'm just trying to figure out what was used to come up with it to be this much larger than the current one?
A few of the components are new, they're added. That was that ACO offices and their needs from that existing air quality building, so that's being added into this. They have lockers, gear, shower opportunities for when they encounter an animal that they need to clean up after, I guess. We also have the night drop room, so there's new dedicated euthanasia room, dedicated cat intake room, dedicated dog intake rooms, there's, and then, yeah, and the ACO officer suite. So there are new program elements added to this. Then there's the addition of the capacity of the kennels themselves and the size of the kennels. There's dedicated separate exotic room, small animal rooms, cat isolation rooms, like Dr. Pinto explained. I believe as of today, when we were there, they had cat isolation inside the surgery room that is used, a curtain is used to separate them. So we have a dedicated room for that, with dedicated ventilation. So there's additional program elements that are not currently allocated in your current shelter.
And this might be an administrative question. So with an increased amount of space, and I don't know how, whether it gets cleaned just now by those who work for animal control, but are we anticipating, you know, more janitorial, other, you know, operating costs that go in with a larger facility? And I know the legislature used to be really bad when they always built new, was never taking into consideration the additional costs, so was any of that done? And if not, could it be done?
I'll make sure, pass that to Kimberly Inberg, but I have to imagine cleaning's gonna be a lot easier, but can you talk on the staffing needs and things like that?
Yeah, so a lot of our workshop, when we were working with Indigo and the veterinarians that were associated with this earlier, is that the cleaning protocol would be a lot different. So right now, we break everything down and we spray it all down and sanitize and set it back up. So it would be spot cleaning on the daily for animals, and then when they rotate out, that's when you would do the full sanitation. So it cuts down on the type of cleaning that you're doing. And it's a lot less stressful for animals to keep items that are scented, like that they're used to, so while we like to wash everything, it would be more saving the clean blankets that are kind of clean, not soiled, and reusing dishes and not washing them all the time every day. So it would cut down a lot in that way. And then we would be able to clean the floors in the space with that time, I would think.
So basically, with the current staff you have now, you're not anticipating, you have to hire others for that type of activity?
Correct. But it would give us room to grow for more services and more staff if there was a need.
Thank you.
Ms. Gardner?
If you could turn your microphone on. Let me turn that on. I have a couple of questions about the upper side on the plans here and the, and the cat area. I'm a little confused about how, with the cat areas being in so close proximity, the intake and isolation being like right next to the, the holding facilities in the cat viewing room. So maybe you could, you know, go over up there on the plan again. The path works there. I'm also looking at this volunteer area, which would certainly be a hallway that runs from one side to the other in the public side of the building. It seems like, I don't know how many volunteers you're anticipating, we've heard quite a few more than you have now, so I don't know how convenient it would be to cut through that area. And another thing I have a question about is ventilation. So the animal ventilation is usually separated from the human space ventilation, and it seems like for that it would be efficient to group all of the human use together, and they seem to be kind of spread out along the south. So I don't know. So we could go with that.
Okay, thank you for that question. And I think this shows the area in question, so the public is coming this way, and the first of the cat rooms is cat adoption and hold right here. This is same thing, but has more of a flex function in case you have more kitties that need some special treatment. Cat's isolation here, which is in a closed-door room like the rest, and then we get to the staff area. So the cat ISO area, typically, we like to put that near the medical treatment area. In this case, it was felt that this is pretty darn close to medical treatment, and it would be more effective to have all the cats' rooms in one region of the shelter. So that's why these are located here. And again, they're separated from the dogs, and they're introduced at the beginning of the human spaces right there. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. In the dogs, the dog intake room is not in the public area for the cats. The cat intake room is in the public area. So is it intended that if someone is rendering a cat, they would bring it back to the intake room?
Correct. This would be the area where cats are evaluated on intake.
So they cross the path between cats coming from the holding room to the visitation?
They would come back this way to that room, and they would be escorted by a staff member typically. As far as the dogs go, this is a much more, you know, dog central facility, and you have a lot of dogs that you really want to be coming in from the staff's secure side, we think, and it's appropriate to have it here adjacent, in particular, to the quarantine where you're bringing in dogs that may have an unknown provenance or illnesses that need to be checked out. You know, it seems more appropriate to have this space on the secure side as opposed directly accessible to the public. What you want to do is have these adoption, open adoption rooms available to the public along this public part of the corridor.
That brings to mind another question, sorry. I volunteer for a cat rescue here in Fairbanks, and we handle almost as many cats as the animal shelter does. We divert those cats from coming to the animal shelter mostly. Nonprofits don't last forever, so what's your flexibility there increasing the capacity of cats?
That's a good question. You know, as we've talked about, there's only so much territory on this floor plan within cost constraints for the project. So we've chosen to make certain that the dogs that you, we know are coming are going to be accommodated in the facility, and that the cats, this goes back to, you know, basically 2022 was a peak year for calculation, and so those cats can be accommodated here. We have, let's see, one, two, three, we have eight in this room, eight in this room, four, or sorry, two in this room. That's the current capacity. As far as future expansion goes, you know, the shelter could expand. We've talked about the additive alternates for more kennels, we've talked about additive alternates for a Sallyport. By the way, I forget who said that the Sallyport is a really needed element, but right on there, because that's an important part to be able to bring vehicles in, discharge animals, not having them running out over old, rich highway, for example. So that, I think if those can be afforded, but you can see that a critical space like that is an additive alternate at this point. So it tells you something about, you know, that we're probably pushing the budgetary limits of the project. The building, the other attribute of the shoebox, though, is that you can expand it in a linear manner, which is one of the great benefits. So you could expand out the secure staff side of the building, and we haven't really drawn it anywhere, but you could expand it out to a limited extent on this end of the building. So some of those plans could include future provision for more cat housing.
So I had, the last question was about ventilation for the human spaces versus the other spaces on that side of the building.
Right. So there's a completely separate ventilation system for dogs and a completely separate system for cats. And as far as cat to human, I would have to check the plans, but these air-based systems, there, I think Tracy mentioned earlier, there's 17 hydronic zones in the building, which means those are elements of control for those parts of the system. And your air-based system has 10 what are called VAV boxes. So it's very likely, in fact, I can be certain of it, that there's a separate VAV box for staff and a separate VAV for the cat kennel area.
I guess my question was, wouldn't it be more efficient to have all the human occupied areas adjacent to each other instead of broken up by the cat and the medical?
I guess I'm not sure what your question is. The staff area is located right here, you have the supervisor office, the break room, and other human functions like ACO and staff break area, well, we mentioned that. What other human parts were you thinking of?
So starting from the lobby, the first one is the manager.
The manager, uh-huh.
Then there's three cat rooms.
Right.
And then there's another manager's office, and then the break room. And then there's a surgical area, which had separate ventilation. And then there's the officers' area, which would be more human.
Right. Well, these were design decisions made in consult with shelter staff, and I believe the intent was to have the manager close to the lobby so that they could oversee and be available for the public that might want to say, hey, I want to see the manager. And that was the reason that's located there. And then, to your point, there was sort of a prioritization of the next things in line that we felt would benefit the public customer. And so, you know, that's how this plan evolved.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the best I can answer your question, I'm afraid.
Okay. At this time, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 7:40. And on my list, we'll start with Commissioner Olness, then we'll go to Crass, Rudy, Haney, and Sherman.
We're ready in the chambers.
The joint work session is called back to order, and on my list, we have, starting with Assemblymember Crass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the operational and maintenance costs. And I know you're at 65% design, but then I've heard talk of, you've already gotten the number of zone valves lined out. I know there's natural gas near the facility. So as we start to nail down some of those assumptions, do we have a good idea of what, say, the fuel usage would be annually?
That's a good question. I would have to check with the engineers and get back to you, but we can get that answer to you.
That would be great, and as close as we could get with the, with the, the electric cost as well. And I understand that there's, you know, at this point in the design process, some of that's going to be up in the air, but those would be good numbers to have on hand, kind of compare with our current facilities. And then, that is correct, isn't it, that there's a natural gas pipeline near this facility?
Yes, there's an existing natural gas line down Leisure Street immediately adjacent to the property.
Fantastic. And then, the one other question I had was on the, there was some talk about the demographics and kind of plotting out the population and needs of the community over time. And I was just wondering what, if there, could you quantify the assumptions in those demographic shifts?
I would like to defer to Bruce, who has stepped away, but there was a capacity study done with a five-year average, and that was done at the time that we started on this project, at the, and it culminated with 2022. And since then, we've been working with Kimberly to get numbers through 2023 and 2024. And it appears, per the graphs and the data that they've shared, that 2022 was the pinnacle, and we're, and it's actually, think, numbers are going down. So.
Welcome back, Bruce. Question about capacity demographics.
Thanks for coming back. Yeah, my question was in regards to some of the underlying assumptions that were built into that capacity modeling.
Sure. I heard Tracy addressing that. I think she hit it on the head. We looked at those past five years. 2022 was a peak intake period, both for dogs and cats. And so the modeling was performed on that. And we, in making a projection of housing capacity, it's necessary to make an assumption on length of stay. The shelter right now is operating at six. We planned the facility for 10, so an average length of stay of 10. And the idea is that with the numbers anyway, that provides some additional capacity so that you can operate the facility at the desired 80% occupancy rate. And the reason that's important is you always, you don't want to operate a shelter with every kennel with an animal in it. You'd like to have 20% left so that you can clean, you can fix things, and so forth. So at least on paper, this gives the shelter the capacity going into the future based on a peak intake that we haven't seen in recent years. The recent numbers appear to be lower.
And I guess, on that note of capacity, one follow-up question if I may. Would, with the shelter and with these sort of flexible kennels, say we had impounded like a large dog yard, you know, say 25 dogs, would it be possible for the existing shelter staff to manage that? Or?
That, I'd say is sort of an operational question, but in theory, you can bring those animals into the shelter if you have room. And by the way, capacity varies day to, day by day, week to week. So if you add the capacity there, you could bring them in. As far as caring for those animals, maybe Kim can address that.
Yeah, so we have had a situation like that several years ago. When we have a huge intake of animals, that's kind of like a disaster emergency response. So we would move as many animals out of our facility as we could. As, usually in those situations, the animals coming in can't leave to foster care or something like that. If their intake is such that we are allowed to send them to foster or have other outcomes, we do that, and we try to move them along our process and get the surrenders needed or whatever may be needed so that we can move those animals out of our system as quickly as possible. But it's kind of like an emergency shelter situation when you get a large quantity of animals like that.
On that note, if I can follow up on that, if you look at slide 29, it talks about the dual-capacity aspects of these kennels. And while there are currently 39 new kennels in the footprint, because they're all dual-capacity with the gate in the middle, as you can see on the taped-off floor patterns there, in an emergency situation, an emergency such as both of you were talking about, you could have a capacity of up to 78 dogs in an emergency situation. We are not staffed currently with the FTEs in place to be able to routinely do that. But in an emergency situation, or the small overflow or something, we can hold more than the 39, and in fact, up to 78.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Olness.
Yeah, maybe this is a question for the designer or animal shelter staff, but in my experience, the way that I've personally utilized the shelter, we routinely bring dogs in that are just coming in for microchips, rabies, and then going back out. They're not necessarily like intakes, especially in a situation where we bring in like six or seven sled dogs at a time, as I know, like we have and other friends of mine have done in the past. What would the flow look like for that? Like looking at slide 25, how would animals be pushed through without kind of intruding on the staff space and not necessarily like staying there?
I can start that. I think it would partly be an operational issue. There are options available. And again, it would be bringing in those people through the main public access point. That probably would be the primary way, I would say. If you had a concerted effort or groups of people coming in, it might indicate, and it might well develop where that night drop entrance developed as a, you know, direction to people coming to the shelter to go to that drop-off area. On the site plan, you may have noticed there was a drop-off area all along the front of the building. Could have a designated area for that and bring animals into the rear of the building. So I don't know, Kim, you had anything you want to add to that? These are issues, I mean, we're trying to provide flexible use entrance points, basically. And it would, I'm not sure Kim even knows how they would actually do it, but she may have some comment on it.
I would just want to add, like, that for sled dogs, especially large groups, that sometimes we accommodate them outdoors. And I would think that would be something we would continue to consider unless there was a better option.
Yeah, and in that case, those definitely come through the secure staff rear area. An arrangement would have to be made to bring those animals in, because that would be too much to envision even possibly bringing them through the front lobby.
Commissioner Rudy.
Thank you. I kind of had a question similar to Commissioner Olness, actually. If it's not a large group, say somebody's coming in with one animal just for rabies or microchip, something that's not surgical, and they're not getting, they don't have to go through intake either, kind of a two-part question, is, is the surgical suite where stuff like that will take place? Just regular veterinary stuff that's not surgical? And if so, it does have the public bring in or staff? But anyway, going all the way down to the end of that half-public, half-staff-only area, just for routine things like that?
The medical area would be for veterinary procedures specifically. So for walk-in, like rabies vaccines, we would take them to the dog intake room, because that's what that room is set up for, for safe handling and for vaccine storage.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions. I'll pick one, one more maybe. Two more. Do we know the R-value of the roof and ceiling in the proposed plan? Thank you. I was hoping for either, or maybe both, an approximate cost per square foot for the building itself, and how much of the $33 million that we've heard is the building design and construction itself, and how much is outside of that scope?
I'll defer the cost questions to Marco.
Thank you.
Our average wall is R45 minimum. And the roof is a 90.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, but you have to remind me real quick the questions regarding the budget or the cost?
Yeah, I had two. What the approximate cost for, per square foot for the building is?
At the 65% estimate, again, we got this some, a little bit, a little while ago. But the, the cost per square foot was around $1,350 a square foot.
And how much of the $33 million that we've heard for the budget for the project is the design and construction of the building, and how much of that is outside the scope of the actual building?
I'm going to have to dig through my paperwork here, but I can get back to you on that.
Thank you. And for the $1,350 per square foot, is, obviously, everything here is higher than average, but that sounds much higher than the average cost per square foot. From all my research I've done on human and animal shelters and medical clinics and facilities, can you speak to why that might be more than three times the average cost that I've seen for similar things in the, probably in the states? So that'll be a big part of it, but what that increase in cost per square foot is, please?
Well, Marco's looking up some things there. It's, as I mentioned earlier, our database, we've looked at, and the cost, on average, adjusted for Alaska, is $1,200 plus dollars a square foot. There are certain things in the 1,300 number that maybe are not standard for lower 48 shelters. So for example, a humidification system. That number, I think, also included the additive alternates that may or may not get funded. And then lastly, maybe most importantly, it's very important in cost estimating to look at what's in the unit cost that one is talking about. Conventional practice is to include the cost of the building and the site work attributable to it in a unit cost. So it may be, I'm not sure what other numbers you've looked at, but the 1,200 a foot mark is what would be an average cost, if built in Alaska, for shelters of this type. And that includes the immediate site work, but if you were bringing utilities and so forth to the building from another area, that would not be included in those kind of reference numbers where we're talking about cost per square foot.
Thank you. And my understanding is utilities would have to be brought to this property. They're not there already. Is that correct?
I guess speaking utilities, I think we mentioned earlier the, the natural gas line that's immediately adjacent to the facility. Electrical would have to be brought, overhead power lines, the cost there is negligible. There is been a more recent development with the neighboring south property that is undergoing development. And the entity, I guess, that is developing that, that south lot is actually taking it upon themselves to already be installing a sewer main line, coordinating with the local utilities there. And so that, that portion of the cost is, is potentially going down. They're not complete with that sewer line. They've also mentioned that they intend to install a water line as well. So those are potential reductions in costs. However, when we go to tie in to said utilities, we would have to pay a premium because we have, we did not build that ourselves. So there's, there's a give and a take, and it's that, that portion of the cost is up in the air as far as connection to the utilities. Design is still in flux in that, in that aspect.
Are those utilities' anticipated costs included in the $33 million that we've been hearing, or is that outside of that?
Yes, yes, those costs were anticipated as part of this project.
Thank you.
All right. Assemblymember Haney.
Thank you very much. I have two questions. The first one is to do with the kennels. On your website, you feature Shot Creek Kennel Construction, which you say creates the national standard for the most hygienic and durable dog kennels that costs less than any other methods of construction. But I noticed here that we have stainless steel. Can you explain the difference?
Sure. Thank you for asking that question. The, when it's, when I said that the, it's a least-cost solution for that kind of kennel, it's superior to either masonry walls, which I think there's some of those in the kennel today. Masonry has a problem that has joints every eight inches, so it's not ideal from a physics standpoint. And it's more cost-efficient than, there's even a more expensive way of kenneling which uses glazed vitreous block, which is another masonry solution. So what we did is we found, partly in California, there's a lot of swimming pools. And so a lot of those go in with Shot Creek. So we found a, a method of building kennel walls up about four to even higher feet out of six-inch-wide concrete. And then you can build those kennels kind of like you would a skate park, where you have trannies and stuff in between it and coat it with the urethane coating. So that's, that was what that referred to when you saw it on your website. So for your project, we, because of a budgetary concern, and perhaps because of a general lack of swimming pools, do I have that right?
Yes.
Maybe there's a lot of ice rinks. But anyway, that type of construction wasn't deemed feasible. And so the next best thing would be to skinny it way down and have six-inch curbs that also are built like little mini skate parks and be coated so that you don't get cross-contamination between each kennel. And then on top of that is built the stainless steel caging system. So for this situation, I think it's the reasonable cost to give you the same general effect. And there will be solid panels between the kennels to keep dogs from, you know, interacting as much as possible.
I know this, I know the sound issue is kind of a thing. I know a lot of times with shelters.
Right.
Appreciate that.
It's a good solution. I think it'll be very durable for you.
My other question may not be something in your valley wicket, maybe in the burrows. But I'm kind of wondering if we've done much in the way of water quality testing or soil testing on this site. I was looking over some older, older information and wondering if any of that stuff had been tested recently. Thank you.
Prior to purchase of the site, the Borough had paid a consultant to do ground soil testing, hazardous material test and whatnot. I don't have that reference on hand, but I can tell you that everything came back normal.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sherman.
With us as we ask our questions. So a question back to the walls for the dog kennels. So you answered a couple of my questions, but how does the current design you're using with stainless steel, what kind of sound reduction is used? Because that is one of those things they talk about with having a good experience. It's not as super noisy for any of the dogs or for less of the dogs and the exotics. And how is that, what are you using for sound reduction in those walls?
So the stainless steel is between the kennels. We then have a wainscoting in the kennel proper, the surrounding, that's impermanable and sanitary. And then above that, we do have acoustical treatment, and we have acoustical treatment of the ceiling. So that's to sound, that's to hinder reverberation and assist with sound. It's not, it's not going to be a quiet room necessarily. But then we also use insulation and a sound wall separation from room to, to mitigate that sound transferring.
Thank you. And so back to the kennels, the cat kennels. Can you tell me what the ASV, I looked for it, and I cannot find it, the recommended size for a cat kennel? Because looking on your, I know you have it there, which is very hard for me to read. And can you tell me what size the kennels are in your current new design, please? And if they've meet ASVA, ASV standards? Thank you.
Well, Tracy's looking for that. I'm not sure I have that answer for you tonight, so we probably have to get back to you on that, but.
Into the microphone, please, Ms. Sherman. Thanks.
Not shown as drawn in, like the dog kennels are, size-wise. And, and so I was just wondering, because they look pretty small. And I'm just wondering about that, that part of the design.
We can get you that back. And a key thing is that those are double-sided kennels too. So they'll have a portal in it that you can open, and the cat can go from one side to the other, all of the cat caging.
I have a couple of questions. Similar to the 1,200 square feet and the 1,350 square, cost per square foot, how does the cost of this facility compare to plans in other similar communities? Has that been evaluated?
I can answer that. We, there's not a lot of other, what I would call, proper shelters built in, in the state of Alaska. You have the one in Anchorage, you have the one in Matsui, there's probably some others. I would say some of them are not advisable that have been built in recent years or planned. Your facility, I think I can say this, when built, will be the best shelter in the state of Alaska. And the reason is because we built it from the ground up based on shelter medicine best practices. Kind of end of story. And we've done so with the, as expensive as it is, it's the most efficient shell of a building that has all the right components in it arranged in the right way. So that is what we're, I'm kind of claiming for you, if you find it useful, I don't know. This is something, you know, be a little bit of bragging rights for Fairbanks in the future. But as far as the, what was the rest of your question? I wanted to get that off my shoulder.
Yeah, yeah.
Comparable costs, yeah. So, well, I mentioned, we, so there, when you look at costs of shelters in Alaska, you'd have to take the bigger ones like Anchorage and escalate it, as I've done with other shelters in, in particular, the other Western states. And so what I've done is I've escalated all those to current and compared them. And I think the $1,300 a foot, which Marco mentioned, it probably includes the additive alternates, if I'm not mistaken. Your base cost is more like 1,200 a square foot. And as Tracy mentioned, this is in flux, because we're just now putting together 90, 95% package. But that $1,200 a square foot average cost, which includes the building, the built-in furnishings, the caging, the site work on the project, but not serving utilities, that cost is comparable to the average cost of shelters built in the Western US. So I wanted to make sure you understood, you're getting a shelter that's in the right price point for what you're getting, basically.
And when you look at the shelter that, that is proposed, even at 65%, what grade would you give it when, you know, in comparison? Are we getting an A+, are we getting something that is, you know, the Lexus or the Jaguar? Or are we getting something that's more practical, like the Ford, which is kind of more our speed?
You're getting four smiley faces on this project. No, it's not, yeah. Well, I don't like to use the car analogy exactly, but I would just tell you that this shelter has all the basic things you would want to have in it for a shelter built today that's going to serve Fairbanks for the next 20, 30, 50 years. And so it's not, it's definitely not a, I'm trying to think of a good car. No, I mean, this is like, it's like the Ford fully loaded. It's got the, all the right stuff in it, but it's, you know, not on the extremes of the cost range.
Thank you for that. One other question is on the secure staff side of the building. We haven't talked much about that, and I noticed on the, on the plans that there's a gate. And then the word "secure staff" makes me think that, that it's not open to the public. However, it looks like the night drop and the way that we've been talking about that seems like there would be public access. So could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. I guess we need one of the, maybe the site plan pulled up, or how would you like to do?
I think, yeah, that, that's a good one.
Sure. That needs to be turned on.
So.
I would say, I was just looking at the facility there, and you can see the fence line with the dark line type. There is a pathway between the building and the fence to access the drop-off kennels.
Here's the public drive here, and you can park here or drop off here or walk in here on this pathway to that night drop. That was added since the 65, per direction of the Borough, and to a covered door access for after-hour drop-off. And then it's separated by fencing, secure fencing for this, people were talking about safety in this neighborhood. Perhaps there is an eight-foot fence, Mark, eight-foot fence, a keyed gate, electronic gate, to allow access in and secured after, around that staff parking, to separate that from this open public side.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that there's a separate staff entrance?
The staff entrance is, yes. Yeah, if you, can you move forward on this slide? There's just a hint of a faint line dashed and a gate, correct. There's a locked separation here. So part of that secure fencing line, so staff can enter this way. This is actually the canopy above, so it's not, yeah, there's a lot being shown right here on this drawing, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So most of my questions have been asked, but Bruce, I have to correct you. We happen to have a lot of pools here in Fairbanks. They're huge. We happen to call them gravel pits. So I guess I, my question, I guess is going to be to the administration. I think I know it. Who plows Leisure Street? Should be the city, correct?
That would be my guess. I don't have that answer specifically, but I would guess. So it's not going to be in our service areas. It's going to be in the city limits, for sure.
Okay. Little bit of a concern there. For some reason, this plan were to go forward, I think we would have to work with the city on plowing that a little more frequently, because they tend to ignore those side roads, especially going into that kind of industrial area. And then I know Ms. Haney asked about the contamination issue. I know there's a junkyard right behind it. Have we done any kind of drilling or core sampling, just to see? You remember, geez, what was it? The battery place was right across the street that contaminated all of that. Have we, have we sampled anything over there for potential?
Again, prior to purchase of the property, we did do soil samples to, to try to assess any hazardous materials. None were, nothing more than, than normal was observed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I will reach out to the City Public Works Department to make sure, if and when this project goes forward, that they plow it better. this project goes forward that they plow it better.
Commissioner Rudy.
Thank you. For the staff gate entrance, is, are you guys planning on using a motorized sliding gate for access? For staff entrance at the back, are you planning on using a motorized sliding gate for entrance?
I think your microphone needs to turn on.
Apologies. It is a, an electric sliding gate on rollers from the top. And there is not a keypad. There's actually a device in the vehicles that can be transferred from vehicle to vehicle and a reader. So when you approach from either side, the gate will open for you.
I professionally recommend considering anything other than a sliding gate for Alaska. Pushing it through snow unless people are going to be diligent daily when it's snowing, you're going to have a lot of operating costs moving forward with service to that sort of system. And the majority of calls we've done on that sort of thing are because people aren't shoveling daily. So it is a, an expenditure in the future to consider for that kind of specifically sliding motorized gates in the snowy season.
Yeah. I'm going to let Marco speak to that.
Just a little bit of knowledge to other projects that the borough has, has had their hand in. The, the Borough Transit Facility, which was newly constructed, I know that the lifting gates were, were thought of being implemented. But I think through discussions with our maintenance department, as well as the staff that would be managing the facility, they thought it'd be best to keep with the rollers. And so likewise, we, we kept that, with that method for, for this facility.
Thank you. I work for a company that does a lot of the maintenance on a lot of the borough gates and a lot of gates in town, actually. We don't anymore because it's such a service, difficult service to offer. People don't like to pay a professional to come out and tell them that, now you have to pay $300 because we shoveled the snow for you, which is a very common thing for us to encounter. So I don't expect it to change, but it is something to consider, how that might affect costs moving forward with that kind of gate access. And do I have time for another question? I was wondering how much the Programmatical Needs Analysis from 2017 influenced the current shelter design?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. We used that as a reference document before we started work on the updated planning study, which was based on 2022 figures. So we leveraged what we could from it. I don't remember particulars, but it was, we realized the borough paid for that, so we wanted to make sure we made best use of it going forward.
I, I have a copy of it. And there, I have a lot of questions about things that, that were deemed requirements for a new facility that might not necessarily be in the new plans. And most notably, I'm wondering why, how the Sally Port ended up as an additional add-on considering how important it seems to be for the shelter. It's part of the PNA that was done and a lot of people in the community and other commissioners have been very vocal about the need for a Sally Port at the shelter. So sorry, the question is, why is that an additional add-on and not part, considered a, an essential requirement for the design?
I would have to say it's mainly due to cost constraints with the overall project budget and trying to get a functioning facility that would fit our community for the next 50 years. And it was determined that the Sally Port would be relatively easier to add on in the future than to try and add core kennel spaces. So that was, that was the reasoning.
I do think maybe other people here have the same experience as I do, but additions on existing buildings do have a lot of potential to separate from the builder, you know, cause problems later down the road when they're not part of the, the initial heart of the structure. We've torn a couple down on our house the last few years that we thought were going to be great add-ons. But the, is there anything else in the plans that would be less, I don't want to say important? Is there anything that could be given from elsewhere to, to have a Sally Port? In the PNA, it does reference the Sally Port is needed to continue the drive-through rabies clinics. So without it, I'm wondering how in this flow those drive-through clinics would happen to.
The intent, the drive-through rabies clinic could happen at that front curb cut and would be an outdoor activity was one option.
Also, since that study, we have started offering rabies vaccines daily instead of an annual drive-through clinic. So we haven't been hosting those.
It's good to hear they're daily. Is the drive-through clinic then not a concern moving forward?
Not currently.
Thank you. I'll wait my turn for some more questions. Thank you.
Okay. My intent is that we wrack, wrap up this meeting at nine o'clock or before, so I just want to set that intention to, to the body. Assemblymember Rees-Romos.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for everyone coming down here. This has been really helpful and just the, you're right, the beginning presentation alone answered a lot of questions that I think a lot of people had, probably by design. That's probably why you guys said what you did. But this has been very great. My question is to the administration and it's not really for me, but just for anybody who's listening. When you mentioned earlier that the animal shelter, you know, went through the KIP process and it became the highest priority, I think, I think you said it was the highest priority. Can you explain that a little bit, just so people can understand, like this is something that the community wanted?
Certainly, Minister Rees-Romos, through the chair. So I have not gone personally through the KIP scoring process, but it's something we've talked a fair bit about, especially with school district projects and things like that. There's a objective scoring process that looks at, you know, replacement needs, safety requirements, needs of the community, impacts and low threshold for the existing facility that's there. And all of those different scoring processes raised this one to have the highest need. And then it also went in front of the assembly where it was ranked on a more subjective basis from the mayor at the time and to the assembly to make sure that it was also voted on by a public process that looked at additional needs and realities of the, the situation there. So through all those different processes, a number of years ago, it came forward as the number one need based on the age of the current facility, the, the relative improvements from the existing infrastructure to the current, to this new shelter and how great of an impact that would be. And that need has only grown in the community. So I could walk through the scoring process and my trusty chief of staff says, oh, I stand corrected. It is the number two facility, the transit garage. Ah, that we had already, so the number one ranking was the transit garage and that has been built. And so now we are, this has now become the number one.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Wilson.
So I guess I just want to put on the record, I don't think there's anybody that disagrees that there's issues with the current animal shelter. So I could see where it's number one, I think where the debate is really getting is how big, how much money, you know, is the community as a whole willing to spend? So I, so I could see how it could get to number one, but I guess I just need a little bit more clarification on the price and what's included in it. Are we still at the percentage that we're at now, still talking about $33 million total cost?
Overall project costs, yes. Around that.
Okay. And so earlier you said it was $1,350 a square foot for the building itself. So based on that, it would be at $23,944,950 for just a simple math. So can you tell me then, where does the other $10 million come into? I mean, is it the barn? Is it, what exact, you know, where are we spending 10 more million dollars at?
So overall project costs have included the purchase of the site. They've included time for borough staff. There's also included our consultants to do the design. Also had third-party consultants to review the estimate and review structural design. And so in addition to, I guess, the, the number that you had quoted, we build in contingencies. We can't, we can't go to construction with just the money that is for the estimate, so.
So it'd be nice to have figures to all those things that you added, but, and maybe I'm incorrect on something. So the barn, the other buildings that are there, what square footage cost are those? Because if I understood correctly while ago, you said 1,350 was just for the main building.
So I, I have to, I guess, state again that the 1,350 was the number for the 65% estimate. The project is, is continued on with design. Things are, are changing around the site, like, like utilities. So things are in flux. As far as the, it's not the outside kennel.
When we, so the, the 1,350 per square foot is for the construction of the actual building, correct?
It's, it's, I guess, I'd like to state again, that was for the 65% estimate. It's for the overall project costs, kind of boiled down to building square footage. So it would be the utility costs. It would also be all the site work and, and such.
Okay. And then on top of that, there'd be the contingency costs, the design, the consultants, the other things that are built in, the land, the utilities and things like that. Or is the utilities included? Do you know off the top of your head? And if we need to get back to this, that's, that's perfectly fine. We certainly can.
I think we can get back to it at a later date, so I can maybe dig up some more specific numbers. But to state this, that the, the purchase of the property is not included in, in the construction costs.
Gotcha.
And Marco, real quick, have we gone out to bid? Have we accepted bids for this project yet?
No.
And what would a bid tell us when we do go out to bid?
A bid would tell us, I guess, how accurate the estimate is, if the bid comes in over or it comes in under. It, for a project of this scale, I could say in comparison to the transit facility, it came in significantly under what was estimated. So it's, estimates are, are in a sense, like a best guess. And things like inflation and uncertainty really change things. So it's, it is a best guess.
Madam Chair, could I get a little clarification? I, because I heard a lot of figures. So is it 1,350 a square foot or 1,550 a square foot? Because you said both while ago.
Did I? 13.
So we're back to 1,350?
I've only heard 1,350. I've never heard 1,550.
Well, I think they were adding in some, like the, okay. Well, that's good. I thought that's, maybe I didn't. So we're going to be able to get a breakdown, what are all those additional costs, like what we've spent thus far? And then what are, because this is just construction for the 1,350 per square foot, but there's going to be a lot of other, the rest of the design, you know, like they said, leveling of the sites, all those other types of things.
For the, we can, we'd be happy to get what has been expended and, and, what's the word I'm looking for? Put aside already for the, the cost for design and consultants and things like that. We'd be happy to get that cost to, to the assembly of what's already been spent for purchase of the property for a design so far up to 65% at this point. That would then grow as we go to 95% and beyond in terms of what, and then would, the bid would come in, we won't know. So that cost might come down in terms of what would fill those numbers. We could get a breakdown, but the most accurate thing so far is going to be what we would have spent already. And I'm happy to provide that.
And would it show the contingencies? Because I keep hearing, all the, all the extra things have not necessarily been added in here and what those extra things are.
Extra things is in the additive.
So you have your base price and then base bid and then the consultants have talked a little bit about there were possible other adds that are not part of that. I don't know what that list even looks like.
Right. I believe there's five items. We can include that as well. It's, if the bid comes in lower than the 33 million that's been allocated, we have an opportunity to decide if we want to add on a Sally Port, add on additional kennels as this slide shows. We can provide a narrative about that whole breakdown as well for the different costs and what those Sally Port and what that list of five items, four or five items would be. And I believe Ms. Van Ersdale also had some added, additions, additives to my statement.
Thanks. I wanted to add just a little bit of clarity. Typically, what our approach is, is to design to 95% of a budget in that our cost estimators, which I appreciate the borough's due diligence to have another cost estimator, vet the exact estimate, all documents, all estimates to make sure nothing was missed. That has a contingency for the unknowns applied to that. And that contingency starts at our early estimates at something like, it could be up to 20, 30% to talk about, you know, economic unknowns, inflations, labor pools and such and considerations. And as the design gets more developed and each of these submittals that I described, the 35%, the 65%, each one of those gets priced and comes out with a complete cost estimate, line item by line item, that we quantify and check and make sure it, it matches our models and our design intents, that contingency is reduced. So we have, we are, kind of carry this responsibility of the construction contingency on that cost estimating set. The borough on their own cover a project contingency for those other unknowns. So there's a little, there's, there's different areas of that that I want to identify. So we design to 95% of the budget, the construction budget, not the project budget, the construction budget that the borough gives us. And then we design upwards from there to 105 or more percent in these design additives. These things that are on our wish lists, they're really, really important, but we've made conscious decisions with direction on what could be parceled and quantified, added within this bid or added in the future. The borough could decide in a year or two or whatever, add these components in. And we've accounted for those in the ventilation, the structural, maybe even in the over excavation so that an addition can be built readily. So that's how we design for these four. Right now, we're tracking four design additives.
Thank you.
I just recommend that, that, that those answers are very clear for tomorrow. I think that the public will really want to know those specifics and that, that those answers are really well-understood by the project team to present tomorrow.
Okay. On my list, I have Mr. Leginus, Ms. Haney, Ms. Rudy, Ms. Sherman. Mr. Leginus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You just kind of touched on one of the questions I had for the administration for tomorrow's presentation. Are you guys planning on listing like some of the questions and answers that was asked and provided this evening to streamline the public's comment?
I was just texting with the public works team now, messaging with them to make sure we have at least a narrative to understand what those, that difference is, the delta in the, from construction to full project bid cost and the estimate that we're putting forward. And the best that we'll be able to give is what we'll make sure we're there to streamline it tomorrow night.
Yeah. Not just the cost and stuff, but like just the generic questions that have been asked tonight.
To the chair, we'll probably run most of the similar slideshow. The cost, the questions that we have, we'll, we'll be happy to include as many of them in the opening and comments and the presentation as we can. If there are specific things you would like to make sure that we do include, I'd be happy to make sure I do that.
Thank you. And then the, the other one, thanks, the administration, for putting this together. This is, is huge. The transparency for us and the public is important. So knowing that as costs go up, the further out these projects get pushed, if the assembly were to appropriate the 33 million to start construction, say, next year, it's sounding like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that would include all these additive additives? that that would include all these additive additives? Alternates, the Sally Port, the...
Yeah, usually, that's a really good question, Assemblymember Leginus. Generally, what we do is we have a base bid package that goes out. And then when bids come in, any additional alternates that we're able to fund with the appropriation, we have a conversation and start ranking and seeing which one of those we can fit into the project. But it depends on what, how the bids come back.
But isn't the thirty-three million to kind of cover that, from what I was hearing? Include all the added alternate? You just spoke on Tracy.
Sure. So as Cuba was stating, once we receive the bids, we will then look at those with reference to how much money we have for construction. And if we can afford the additional alternates, the additive alternates, then the borough added the option can select for the contractor to construct that, to include it in their contract. If we don't have the funds, because bids can go up and down, we don't know what the bids are until we get them. Only if we have the funds available to construct would we then include it into the project. It's not guaranteed.
Okay. I just would have one more. So not only are these added alternates kind of part of the bid, I guess, or price tag? What other, like amenities style, items are included? You know, be it with a barn, corral, the dog sled area, and any medical equipment, be it like an x-ray or ultrasound? Is there anything that considered?
This is Commissioner Rosenberg. Can I just be totally out of turn and say the shelter fund bought an ultrasound? And if there's specific medical equipment that the veterinarian would like, we would buy that?
Thank you, Commissioner. Would the administration like to weigh in additionally?
The equipment that will, throughout the facility, is included in the design package. So that would include the stuff that is going to be within the surgery suite.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. That's all.
All right, Assemblymember Haney.
Hi, thank you. I want to make sure I'm following you correctly on the night drop because I think I see a problem in how you have that set up. Can you walk me through that one more time, please?
Do this from here, if that's okay. So from the exterior, you would walk along that path into the building?
What? I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll go up there. Here.
So you're actually going to have to walk around the building with the animal to get to the night? There's no way to pull up to the door to the night drop?
Correct, there would be a short walk. It's not far, lighted. There would also, yeah, and then covered here. The concern was how many exterior doors on the facility total would have to be monitored? And they wanted to be sort of clustered, have canopy protection and be lit. So also be in a proximity where the staff could enter in that room from a separate door and access the animals and bring them directly inside. So where, and be directly brought to the intake room and then into possibly quarantine or such. So not knowing where the animal came from and its history. So that proximity was a leading factor of where these animals wanted to be brought in and processed, I guess. So that happens here, towards the back. Staff can then enter on a separate door. If you flip to the floor plan, Bruce, please. It might be best in the floor plan. So underneath this arrow is the public access door. So that would be unlocked at a certain time. The door into the facility would be locked. They would have the proper paperwork and registration information there, access to water to put into each of their kennels here and then go as they please. And then at the certain hour, that door would be locked and the staff could access in there safely without interacting with the public if not needed.
So is that ADAC compliant?
Yep.
The reason why I'm wondering, just bear with me. I'm walking through something right now through their sort of end-of-life stuff that's going on in their life. And actually, one of the things they're having to do is give up. And so, and I think through, she would never make that walk. She would, it would never even be possible for her. And we have a community where the senior population is four times, squared four times faster than the rest of the population. And I think quite often times when people are giving up their pets, it's either sort of a medical, end-of-life, near-end-of-life kind of event or it's, they've tried to rehome it, can't rehome it, whatever reason, having to give it up, heading out of town, financially desperate, blah, blah, blah. And I just, I think about the first scenario being a little bit more perhaps common in these spaces than the second one. And I just, I'm looking at that walk and I'm thinking, you know, December, ice. That's fine.
We would love, as people that work with animals, rescuing animals, is for them to come during the day in the front door and meet with us face-to-face and explain to us, this is why I have to give up my beloved animal. These are the things that they like, these are the things that they don't like. This is the kind of family I'd like them to be with. And then we can help so much more finding them the appropriate home. When they're dropped in the overnight boxes, it is... Even if someone is very, very diligent with the paperwork, it's very easy to miss details that can make that animal's life much better. And if you come to the front door, we're there to help you. If you need help with a wheelchair, with a pet, with a leash, that's what we're there for.
I appreciate that. I just know that, I don't know how much you know about aging, but there's a phenomenon called sundowners.
I'm very familiar with it.
And they tend to sleep all day and they're up all night. Although it's kind of hard to tell in Alaska anyway because in the winter, it's kind of all the same. And I'm quite sure that a lot of times these decisions get made in those sundowner hours. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, I have a few questions, if I may. What's the projected life of the building as it's designed so far?
Fifty years, the standard practice.
Thank you. And let's see. Going back to the kennels a little bit, because I think I missed something for some of the noise control. The panels between that are the stainless steel, is there anything between the different pieces of stainless steel? I know in like the current shelter kennels, the stainless steel walls have enough of a gap that they just fill with like putrid water from cleaning over the years. Are there spaces like that in these kennels that would need more drainage so that doesn't happen?
I would say no. Each kennel will be independently drained and there's no cross drainage between the kennels.
I mean, from like washing the walls and spray, from the kennels getting into like cracks between two pieces of stainless steel and trapping water has been an issue with the existing kennels.
Yeah, well, the modern kennel designs have a minimum of that. So you never see them really with spaces created. And so there shouldn't be a problem with that.
And is there anything in there for noise reverberation control between the kennels? Seeing big pieces of stainless steel just brings back my vet clinic days with lots of large, wobbly pieces of stainless steel getting barked at all day.
Yeah, I mean, these will be better constructed kennels, but there's not much you can do inside the kennels for noise mitigation.
And was the reason that the shotcrete walls weren't gone with was just a budgetary concern?
Budgetary.
There was, on the website, on Indigo's website, I believe, it does reference that the, it is the national standard for most hygienic and durable lasts or costs less than other methods of construction. And so what makes this method of construction less costly than the shotcrete option?
Well, it doesn't have the concrete going up, just the curb. As I mentioned earlier, the standard for kennels and most cost-effective is referring to other full-height masonry kennels. So it'd be concrete block coated or glazed vitreous block, which is quite expensive, is another solution.
And is, there are local contractors that do shotcrete. It is a summer-only option. But is that any, is that included in any of the additional alternatives to do the shotcrete walls?
No.
I think, just to add a little bit, I think when we did the skate park, we did use shotcrete, but we had to bring a contractor from the Lower Forty-Eight for that. I don't think there was someone who either bid or was able to do that here.
Interesting. I wonder if the local companies just didn't bid for some reason? Or maybe it is, it does happen quite often that local contractors cannot possibly come in as a low bidder, which tends to be how projects are chosen. So we do get a lot of outside contractors that get that sort of stuff, for sure. And I had one more. Do you know the current square footage of the storage in the new plan? Not including the inbuilt wall storage you mentioned? It's like dedicated kennel storage is awesome that they have all that, but maybe unstructured isn't the right word. Not defined what's going to be stored there yet, but just storage space.
We can get you that square footage. I will say that every room through either built-in or pieces of equipment have been identified. There are catalog pages of imagery that Dana has walked through with Kimberly, Sandy, and Dr. Pinto for every piece of equipment and exactly where it fits. And it's in our model and shown as a outline. So everything is accounted for and been, I don't know how many pages the fixtures furnishing and equipment is, but there's a stack of the items that are specific and located in the building, so.
Thank you. Do you think that the square footage might be the same or more than the three conxes worth of storage that are referenced in the PNA from 2017 that are on the current property being used as storage?
Well, we still have those three conxes on our site. So a comparison of what is in there for emergency services and needs is not accounted for in the building. There's still some of that equipment outside in those conxes. And maybe Sandy would like to speak, or were you waving at me or just?
So will they be utilizing outdoor unheated conex storage? That's part of the new plan as well?
So the items stored in those conxes wouldn't be appropriate to be stored in the building itself? Those are items that are dedicated for emergency response, for the most part. There is one conex that has shelter-related items in it. But I have to admit, we can go through that and narrow that down quite a bit, I'm sure. We tend to be on the hoarding side of some things. So when we move into a new facility, we'll pare that down.
Thank you. I know in the PNA, it was one of the main concerns was lack of storage at the current facility. It just looks, from the design, just the areas for storage look small. But thank you, I appreciate the answers.
Commissioner Sherman? If you could use your microphone?
Thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you. So on the add-ons, it says humidification is an add-on. So can you walk me through how dehumidification is handled then throughout the building to prevent mold? I mean, how, because we, even though we're classified as a semi-arid region, we have a lot of humidity in the winter and people know about mold. And it seems like it could be problematic for animal health and particularly for the health of the people working there. So how will the removal of, you know, wet water? You know, how will dehumidification happen within the HVAC system?
We could supply you a narrative from an engineer, our engineer specialist. But well, that would be great. Well, yeah, I am an architect. So we could get that answer to you, though, in writing, so that it could be most accurate. What I can say is that we have and do provide humidification in certain buildings. We just did the Child Development Center out at Fort Wainwright for four hundred kids. And that was designed as a humidified facility as a requirement. The surgery addition also at the Fairbanks Memorial Hospital. So it's something that we have done before and worked successfully on to create an envelope that prevents the mold in our assembly and through our mechanical engineers as well, the proper ventilation. We can provide that as a narrative to you, so it's...
So that's already in the design? It's not an add-on, is that correct? I guess that's what I was confused by.
Right, it's an additional option should the project afford. We have designed for that system.
So we currently, if we, if they go ahead and they don't, they decide not to pay for that, we don't have a humidification system. It will be without one. Would it be feasible economically to put one in if we found that we needed it? It seems pretty basic.
I'm an engineer to speak to that.
Thank you. And I have, I promise I'll be as brief as I possibly can. I know other people have to go to work in the morning, too. So I noticed there are a lot of kennel spaces for quarantine dogs. I'm wondering if there are more than, it seems to be more than, is that the existing shelter? Are there more dogs being held in quarantine now on any given day? That's the first part of my question. Are there more? It's a pretty big quarantine space. So are there more dogs? Is it an upward spiraling number? I know there's one another way to say that. There also seems to be a limited amount of kennel space for puppies. And these guys have spoken to us many times about Puppypalooza's. And could this be relatively inexpensively modified, design-wise, if needed? Or, and I know you talk about operational choices, but it seems to me that design and operation go hand in hand, especially as you're beginning.
I'll start then, Kim can follow up. All the room sizes and capacities were, excuse me, part of the initial study on the project. And so the quarantine space in particular was an assessed area for the amount of animals that would be coming in, particularly from the ACO side of things, and some from the front of house. So I don't have the exact justification for that, but that was calculation early in the design for the project. As far as the puppies go, we have one room, which is really a small animals room. And so there may be, sometimes you have puppies and maybe other animals. We have eight caging in there for eight puppies at the moment. There's always a possibility of putting puppies in kennel space. It's meant for adult dogs. And that would be used for any additional needs that might be faced right now. But I'm going to let Kim carry on with that, and we can describe further.
In our current facility, we have eight quarantine kennels. They're frequently quite full. And we do have quarantine puppies also that are, we usually house in the puppy room. So it allows for a little bit of growth compared to what we have now, but it definitely is a need.
have now, but it definitely is a need as far as the amount of quarantine kennels.
Okay, Assemblymember Crass.
Thank you. You know, I want to thank the gentleman with Indigo, Hammond and Ms. Van Arsdale. You guys have done a tremendous job developing a building that seems to be very close to exact fit at this point, 65% close to the borough's animal control mission. I guess, you know, this is an appropriate forum to ask this, it's kind of an uncomfortable question. And so it's for the administration and maybe Ms. Gardner, maybe the whole Animal Control Commission. Has there been any thought to looking at the, returning to the original animal control mission of rabies and euthanasia? And what would be sort of the practical and moral implications, I guess practical for the administration, looking to the Animal Control Commission, what are the ethical considerations of changing the mission? It strikes me that that is the only real cost savings of any substance to be found here is if we change what we're doing as animal control. These fine folks here have developed a system that meets our needs quite well, seems to have been tailored to us like a fine suit. So the only thing I can think of is if we change the shape of ourselves. And has that been considered, I guess, to the administration? And what might some of the implications of that be to the members of the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Crass.
In the four and a half year of our position, no, we have not looked at what that would look like from our perspective. I believe that we're not providing an entire suite of surgeries, we're not offering an entire full spectrum of services out there. So I don't think we're providing a lot in this community. We have a decent private sector amount of veterinarian opportunities out there and offices from our four all the way through Fairbanks, but there are shortcomings out there. And if we wanted to stop providing a lot of these services, stop providing the onsite spay and neuters as we are offering adoption, our problems would grow. If you're going to have to do that through the private sector, those costs would increase. If anybody's had to take their dog to the after hours animal shelter to drop off.
That, those costs are astronomical for many people, which would result in, you know, a lot more concerns and a lot more problems out there. So in terms of a community health concern, in terms of a community capacity and a compassion capacity, we have not looked at that. As I believe, you are correct, if we, the space and ways we would cut down on these costs without providing a well-structured shelter that we won't need to be having these conversations for another 50 years, what we do is what we would need to cut down on. And that is something that, you know, we could look at and the community might want to do, but if we want to be a growing community that provides a healthy place for people and animals of all types, I think what we're doing would be the minimum that we should be doing right now.
I would like to say a little-
Chair Gardner.
I've been on the commission for about 20 years. There are several people here have been on the commission longer and I can't recall anyone ever complaining that the shelter was providing too many services. And I think the community, people that we hear from, they want more. I mean, it's, you know, the industry and the societal approach to companion animals has changed a lot in the last 20 years. I know working in animal rescue and that spay neuter is essential. You can't adopt your way out of having too many animals. And, you know, we thoroughly support the animal shelter, being able to do spay neuters right there, gets them out of the shelter so much faster and we know for sure that it happens. I mean, there have been times in the past where, you know, you would give them a voucher and they would take the adopted animal to the, a vet of their own and, and I don't know, get a hundred dollars off or something. It just didn't happen a lot. People that were going to get their animals spayed or neutered, they did it and the people that weren't, you know, it didn't matter what you offered them. It needs to be done ahead of adoption and, I mean, we really support that. What they have for surgery right now is really a difficult situation and needs to be changed.
I agree with Commissioner Gardner. I volunteer at a local spay and neuter clinic and there's, even with the shelter doing spay and neuters and every vet clinic in town doing spay and neuters, there's months-long waiting lists to get the animals spayed or neutered at the clinics I volunteer at. And the other people that are involved in those clinics do other spay and neuter clinics all over the state. And I think if you removed the option for the shelter to spay and neuter, it would be a detriment to our community. And I think that everything that I've heard from the community that I've talked about, I talk to the community a lot about the animal control and the new shelter and people don't want less, like Commissioner Gardner said, they want, they want more. In this new facility, there's a community room, maybe there could be classes for people to learn responsible pet care. There's a lot of opportunity in a new shelter for our community to grow and have healthier relationships with pets and the animals that live here. Just want to make sure that for $33 million, we get the absolute best-designed new shelter that we can. I don't know if any of the commission members don't want us to be getting a new shelter. We are all in agreement with animal control that the way that they're working and operating currently is completely unacceptable.
Thanks. Mr. Crass, you still have a floor if you have anything further?
No, thank you. I welcome if any other commissioners have input on that. This is a very rare time for us to get to interface directly like this.
Sherman.
I, second and third, what they say, they're, we ask these hard questions because we've paid a lot of attention to design. We've talked to lots of different vets in town. People come up to us and they say, does this mean this, this? Do we need this, this? I said, you need to look at it and talk to it. I can tell you what I think, but I don't, I'm not an engineer and I'm not an architect. But like Cass said, we, I agree with the things that they need totally. And, but we want to make sure that it's as good as it can be for the northern climate, that it does last 50 years, that there's enough flexibility in systems like, I forgot to ask about it, is there an onsite vacuum setup already in there because, and having these things that if it's already set up with a great HVAC and we can dehumidify and all of that stuff, that we can add on as needed or as not? It isn't that we don't want it. We all desperately see what it needs. We know what goes on with drop-off kennels. We understand the whole kerfuffle with that and we deal and rescue. So we want it, but we want what is going to be optimum for the borough, for the public and for the animals.
Mr. Swan, did you also have something to add?
Yes, I do and I'll be very brief. Assemblyperson Crass, I believe that the assemblyperson who proposed a strict public safety model such as you mentioned would be committing political suicide in this borough.
All right. There we go. Okay, so on my list, I have Haney, Rooney and Swan. If Mr. Swan, you still wanted to be in the queue or if you just wanted to respond to Mr. Crass, I will ask members of the body now to wrap up your comments, so if anybody has any-
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Haney. Nothing more from you this evening then? And if there's anybody else who wants to speak, I just ask that we wrap up our comments and questions. So Ms. Rudy, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be quick. It's two parts, but they're the same thing. I have only been on the committee, it's been less than a year that I've been involved at all. And so this may have been, this was definitely before my time. Was there a third-party review of the design ordered at some point that just hasn't happened? And why?
I'm going to direct that to the administration.
So in terms of the third-party review, no, we have not done a specific design of it. We have the experts who are following the credentials for the ASV, who have national renowned work, who have put in the work and the understanding in the design to make it work with the animal shelter standards across the country. We, as I said before, we worked with Dr. Kate Hurley, who wrote the ASV standards and started working on those and she was influential in these designs. And then we had the experts here locally to make sure that it's good for Fairbanks. There are, if you brought in a, we have, did not, one of the reasons we didn't do a modified small third-party review was there were concerns about if there'd be a competitive bias or something like that in the process, but we have faith in the experts as their credentials stand up, the ASV standards stand up, and the questions in here, given the opportunity for the public tomorrow, weigh in once again, would stand up on their own merits.
Thank you. And then the second part would be, is there room in a $33 million budget for something that would cost less than half a percent of that budget, which was around what I've heard a third-party review would cost? And are the parties involved willing to allow for a third-party review from a place like Lerna Design, who's leading in the nation with this sort of thing? Just to do a design review on what we have so far at 65 or at 95? Not to take the project from Indigo at all, because they've done all of this work and it's amazing work, but again, for $33 million, the community is not going to get behind this if it's not the, it should be the best that it can be. And anybody that looks at it should, that third-party review should say that there's absolutely nothing to change if we're going to spend $33 million on a project like this. I just think that there should be room for somebody else to weigh in so we get the best thing we can for the community at that price. Thank you.
Mr. Swan, Commissioner Swan, do you have any, did you still want to be in the queue or are you?
No, I have nothing more.
Okay, great. Commissioner Gardner? I think your microphone needs to come on.
Yes. The Corret Shelter Medicine Guidelines been mentioned several times tonight and they are guidelines, they're not code, they're not standard and they don't operate shelters. There are veterinarians that work with shelters, but they don't operate any shelters themselves. Just as, just so you understand where they're coming from, you know, they're, that using them as a consultant doesn't negate the need to understand the local issues. And I guess my second question is, if the Animal Control Commission still has questions, how should we, about the design for Indigo or Betty's birth or Public Works, what should we do with those questions?
Thank you. I believe that the question should be directed to the administration, is that correct?
Yes, and of course tomorrow, there's the open house where you'll have an opportunity to talk to this design team one-on-one as well as, you can email them through us and we'd be happy to work on it.
I'm going to stop you right there.
Just remember OMA for the Assembly and the Commission. No more than three commissioners from the Animal Control Commission can attend that open house and no more than three Assemblymembers can attend that open house tomorrow night because of OMA.
First come, first served on that basis, but our email is always open.
Can I answer your question?
So direct them to the mayor's office.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Wilson, closing comments?
First of all, just so you understand, if somebody leaves, somebody can go in.
Yeah.
So you just might have to wait, right, till somebody leaves? I guess a question to the administration, I know there's a different schedule for boards to be able to meet, but would it be possible for the Animal Control Commission to be able to maybe have a special meeting, especially just on this issue with all this additional information, so they would have an opportunity maybe to put something legally, because it would be noticed, to gather other concerns or concerns that have been alleviated? Because I know that would be helpful to me because you guys know so much more than I do and I agree with you, I wish they would do the other $10,000 to make sure everything is done. But more than that, I think having that opportunity after taking all this in, being able to come up with something would, I know definitely would be helpful, I think, to myself, if not other members here.
Madam Clerk, would you be able to weigh in on that?
The main issue, if it's something that needs to happen within this next month, we just don't have any capacity in the chambers at all. We are pretty much booked up with what's going on in April and May.
With that said, it's always a prerogative of the commission to, through the chair, to work with the clerk's office and on a time that would make sense for review, for a special meeting.
Okay, thank you. Because yes, we, the commission, this is the first we've seen of these plans as well, so.
Anything further, Ms. Wilson?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else in final closing comments, questions, discussion?
Can I just point out one thing?
I'm sorry. I will give an opportunity for the project team to have any further comments, so if you'd like to do that in closing comments, I'll invite you over to a microphone. And you can do that right now. Sorry, Mr. Crass. And Mayor Hopkins from your administration or from the project team, are there any final comments that you would like to offer?
Just quickly, I want to thank the commission for all the work and the care you guys have done. Many of you have been on these commissions for many, many decades. So thank you for always caring about the care of our animals across the board and how they interact with our community. So thank you all and for coming here today and having the best questions. You know more than all of us on this side of the panel for that matter. And thank you to the design team for coming up here and I look forward to seeing you all again tomorrow for another round as we work to make sure the people of this community understand the different aspects of the project and feel a more comfortable level for why things are the way they are. Because we have wonderful experts here who put in a lot of work on it and understand why we're doing the things that we are. Thank you.
Dr. Pinto, did you have something to add?
Just a small thing, just in response to the ASV is not the law. It's not the law, but it is a baseline standard of care. And standard of care is how they judge, for example, if I don't meet standard of care, I'm not qualified to keep my veterinary license. So if we don't meet standard of care in the shelter, then we're really not doing it right.
Thank you for that. Ms. Van Arsdale.
Sorry. I just wanted to thank my team and thank you for this opportunity tonight. Our goal is always that there are no surprises in our projects, that what you see when it's constructed is exactly what you envisioned and what your goals were for the project. So that's why we try to follow a process, following the borough's guidelines. So I wanted to thank my team here, including Dr. Pinto and Sandy and Kimberly, because they are a valued member of this design team and along with Leslie and Marco and Public Works that made this a pleasure to work with. And we do look forward to tomorrow in answering all your questions and I have my list of ones that I couldn't answer myself, but we will get that back through our channels to make sure there's no surprises and we're part of a successful project. Thanks.
Thank you. Can you remind us when, what the time is of the meeting tomorrow and where?
5:30 at Carlson Center Prow Room. So the presentation starts at 5:30. We'll be there early and I'm sure we'll be there late.
Okay, great. And on behalf of the Assembly, thank you so much to the Animal Commission for being here this evening and for your thoughtful questions and what a neat experience we had today. So really appreciated the opportunity to have this session with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at 9:08, the special joint work session of the Borough Assembly and the Animal Control Commission is adjourned.